I'm wondering if somebody could chat us and tell us what they're seeing on their screen. Because we see ourselves all stripey. And also chat us if you can hear us.
David or Brian or Christina?
I'm sorry.
We can hear you, but it is all, the image is all messed up.
Yeah, okay, good. At least you can hear us. I'm going to read the agenda. Do you think we have, what do we have to do? You think we have to go out and come back in or? Is that something we can fix here?
We had that same problem last, last time.
We did, okay.
But it was fixed.
All right. I will read the agenda while we're trying to fix our technical difficulties. We start with community input. We'll be talking about town meeting study committee charter discussion. Tax classification hearing, a joint meeting, municipal facilities committee, open annual town meeting warrant opening. TA review lessons learned, police and fire chief evaluation discussion, town administrator report, review minutes and warrants, liaison reports, and another session of community input, after which we will adjourn. Great. Is there anybody here who is interested in giving us some community input in, in the room with us? Seeing nobody, anybody online in the Zoom? Zoom-a-fer? Okay. Go ahead, Debbie.
Hi, I'm Debbie Bentley from Hild Road. I'm here to talk about the Hanscom Airport expansion. On the 20th of October, the select boards of Concord, Lexington, Lincoln, and Bedford sent a letter to the governor exposing the expansion of this airport for private jets. I live on the flight path into Hanscom. Every day, including the weekends, I and my neighbors are subject to the noise and more importantly harmful pollution from these jets. I raised this concern with the select board of the, the concern of the expansion with the select board in June. And to the best of my knowledge, you've not taken this issue up with the governor. Most of the flights into Hanscom are under three hours and most of them are for, a lot of them are for recreation. There's a report called the Hanscom High Flyers that illustrates their research. And so I really want to reiterate what I said and I requested in June, please act on opposing this extension. Because if we, if Carlisle remains silent, it sends the wrong message to, to the governor and to Massport. This is really harmful to our environment and it's really harmful to the carbon emission issue that the world faces. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? Who would like to offer? Community input? Can we see the? Unpin maybe?
Can you unpin and put the? Pretty much, please?
Great, thank you. Anybody else with their hand up? Okay. Seeing none, we'll go to the town's meeting study committee charter discussion. Wayne, would you care to join us, please? I'm going to turn it over to you and to Nathan.
Yep. Wayne, go ahead.
Okay, Wayne Davis, here as town moderator and speaking on behalf of both Nathan and myself. Just as some quick background in discussions that I'd had with you back in roughly the September timeframe, we had talked about the possibility of doing a more thorough review of town meeting. And you asked at that time that we come back, return after the October town meeting and ask Nathan and I to put some ideas together. So that's what this is some. It's a labeled draft for discussion and basically we've put some thinking into it and turned it over to you and you run with it from here. I'll just take a minute to quickly summarize what's here. I know you've read it, but for the benefit of those in attendance here or online, the basic purpose is quote, "to investigate and recommend strategies to heighten citizen engagement in the town meeting process and improve town meeting." Town meeting process, I think, as we've discussed several times, the quality of what happens at town meeting is largely determined by all the effort that gets put into it and the, the quality of the preparation in the eight or nine months before you get to town meeting. So that's why there's a focus on process. The, this proposal goes on to outline five main areas of focus, not meant to be exclusive, but the main areas are first, development and review of the warrant article submission process. Second, public understanding and engagement before town meeting. Third, the logistics of town meeting. Fourth, the conduct and process of the town meeting itself, including debate rules, voting, remote access, et cetera. And last, alternatives to town meeting, as we've noted, some people say, why do we have to do this? Isn't there a better way? There are limited options under Massachusetts general laws, but might as well look at them because people want to know. Jumping to the bottom of the proposal. Let me just, actually no, not, not quite to the bottom. So the idea is that this study committee would submit a final report to you, the select board, which would include not only recommendations, but also evaluation of any interim experiments or ideas that have been already tried out while the committee is actually in existence. And this ties to the suggested timeline here, which we're proposing this be a committee with an end date, June 30th, 2025, which would get us through two annual town meetings, the 2024 and 2025. And the idea is that the deliverables would include interim recommendations. Whenever the committee wants to propose something, come back to the select board and say, hey, we're proposing this. Specifically, we would ask for interim recommendations that could affect the timeline for development and adoption of the warrant, that those should be delivered by September 30th, 2024, so that if there are any changes to the scheduling for the 2025 annual town meeting, there'd be plenty of time to implement that. And then a final report by June 30th, 2025, with the expectation that the report include evaluation of suggestions that have already been tried out through the spring 2025 annual town meeting. Last piece is just the membership. This, I think we had the most struggle with, came up with a seven-member board. As we've discussed with you previously, it should include some range of representation from boards and committees that have a real stake in the, the process, but also should include citizens and even people who can't even make it to town meeting because they have a stake in the process too. So if you have a lot of official representation, how big do you want the thing to get? And then the trade-off is, well, if it's too big, you have trouble getting a quorum. We've come up with seven, don't know that there's any particular magic to that number. And, and it's actually would be eight because my recommendation is that I'd be included as an ex officio member. In other words, I wouldn't have a vote, you know, count me for quorum. But I would be there as, as a resource and, you know, to show my support and to provide information. But I don't want it to be my committee. I don't want to run it and I don't want people to feel like they have to do things just because that's Wayne's preference. So that's the proposal.
Thank you. Did you want to add something, Nathan?
I just want to add, so kind of next steps where, you know, this is just a draft. But what we would very much like to do is start really getting the word out. We did mention it at town meeting. We've had an article about it in the mosquito, but we'd really like to start collecting people. And so if, and, and we've heard from at least one person that I know that has already expressed an interest, maybe there's others. But, you know, so what we'd kind of like is a general nod today that yes, this is, this is the direction we could still work out. Like maybe if, if people have concerns about the number of members, well, maybe we can work that out when we see how many members we're getting. But we'd like kind of a general nod that yeah, this, this, this in concept is great. This charter is good, maybe with some, you know, a few edits, but you know, let's go ahead and start recruiting people because time is really pretty critical in order for us to be able to do a lot between now and June of 2025.
What are your expectations as far as the require, the time requirements for this committee? You know, meetings, number of meetings, that kind of thing. Have you given any thought to that or?
Good question.
We have, the two of us have to really discuss it, yeah. My, my thought was it's the sort of thing where they might have a couple of meetings in quick succession at the beginning, like every two weeks, have maybe two or three organizational meetings, and then figure out a cadence of maybe once, once a month. And they'd have to see how it goes. I also think that the nature of the subject matter here does lend itself to subcommittees. Now, now I realize, now that raises an issue because this, there is no reason that anything being done here needs to be, there's nothing particularly confidential, right? It's, it's can and should be all fully open under open meeting law. So that means even if you have two people on a subcommittee, they actually ought to post the meeting and come have it here. And, you know, if people want to show up, they, they can. But I think a lot could be done, for example, on the questions of logistics of town meeting. There are a lot, a lot of things that people, that, that would benefit from someone do, you know, one or two people doing some research, trying to develop some ideas and then bring it back to a larger committee. So it really kind of, it would depend on how the, the group chooses to organize itself.
Yeah, I think, you know, maybe this is a little too loose, but there, there is a defined set kind of really what we're looking for. And I think we would be looking for that committee to be defining for, for them, what's the right cadence for them to hit those goals.
Yeah, my, my only other concern is, is if that June 20, sorry, September 24th deadline is too aggressive. And if maybe you want to, because we are currently in November, we're just going to be opening the warrant for our, our town meeting in April or May or whenever it's going to be. I just want to make sure you have enough time and that, that doesn't put undue pressure.
That, that timeline is for the town warrant process.
Okay, okay.
Not, not for a report.
Right.
Right. And, and, and that one specifically around the warrant process because I, I just, I'll call it the Concord model for convenience because they're nearby and we know what they do. And they're actually a relative outlier in, in that what they do is they close their warrant very early in January or February, something like that. Even though their town meeting typically is around the same time as we do it. And the whole point is they close the warrant early and then their FinCom has lots of meetings and a lot of things get developed after the warrant gets closed. Carlisle is not totally at the other extreme, but pretty far to the other side of waiting till pretty much the last minute to close the warrant. Other towns fall in, in between. And I, I personally don't have a view on which one is better or not. But if the committee was to come up with as part of their overall view that really we ought to move not totally in the Concord direction, but somewhat in that direction, that would affect the whole cadence of everything that FinCom, school committee and everyone, everyone else has to march to through the rest of the year. So that's why we said September 30th for that specific set of things. And if they didn't have recommendations on it, then fine, but just, just so that they know, because coming up with those recommendations in January isn't going to be helpful for that year at least.
That's correct. Okay.
Would you be looking for administrative support for this, meaning minutes, taking minutes from the town?
Or even some of the gathering of what best practices in other towns?
I think some administrative support would be helpful. And indeed, the, the involvement of the town administrator, you know, to, to some degree, because it, you know, a large part of, part of the process is bringing proposals forward. So, yeah, I, I don't imagine, I, I'm not, I don't imagine it would require too much administrative support, but it would be useful to, to have a designated person. And I'm going back to thinking about the experience that I know the Governance Task Force had. They want to do surveys of, you know, boards and committees and to get some, you know, public support and all that. And they basically were on their own to try to figure out how to, how to do that. They didn't even have a single individual they could come to and say, would you help me? And so I, I think that, that would be an absolute minimum, that someone be designated to provide support.
So, but one, A, I think this is a very good thing for us to be doing and I think this general outline makes sense to me. Couple of things. One is, and I assume then if we were going ahead with a fall town meeting in '24, that these same things might apply and that we, you know, as I read this, I mean, I think one of the things that stands out to me is that you're, the, there's an encouragement to consider things to try out between now and the final report so that we had an ability to evaluate whether doing things differently in some way was useful. And so if we have a fall '24 town meeting, I, you know, I think we should be thinking of that the same way, right? It gives an opportunity to whatever. So, so that's one thought. The other is about, I think you might want to come up with a number. And I understand the idea about waiting to see who's interested, but I wonder if you want to in advance have a better, have a number for how many non-committee related members you want to have, basically, you know, town residents that aren't associated with a particular board or committee? Only because I think it helps. You have an idea, okay, how many volunteers are we really looking for? And if you, if the, I mean, and the related question to me is, so the select board, finance committee, planning board, and school committee, you've singled out to say they would give, be given the option to nominate someone. And just sort of why that particular group, select board and school committee, you know, I, and finance committee. I'm just wanting planning board versus conscom or, you know. And so when you start to delineate that, you know, just to think about why, and, and people may ask if they're on one of those other committees or commissions, why, why aren't, why don't they have the option, you know, to designate somebody?
That, that's a great question. And as I mentioned, membership was the thing probably we
Yeah, right.
Had the most trouble with. So I think the select board and FinCom are kind of obvious because they have their fingers in just about everything that, that happens at town meeting. So again, you know, you, you or FinCom could say, no, you know, it's, it's fine. And, and that's also why we said it's either a member, a current member, or if you thought that just, if, if, if the particular board thought, well, if we get someone who's knowledgeable about how, how we work, but isn't currently engaged, you know, so that we don't have to give yet more time out of our busy weeks, they could do that. The reason for the school committee is just this reality of how big a piece of the budget they are and even but again, you know, you could easily say, no, we don't necessarily have to, you know, we can just say in the charter, we want you to, in, you know, an alternative to actually including the school committee would be to move up to the top, the focus. We want you to consider exactly how the school budget comes to town meeting. Are we doing it the right way? Should we consider alternatives? If you do that, then the school committee will certainly have an interest in having some input. The planning board is somewhat similar in that, you know, zoning articles typically can, they're, they're, they're not always a large part of the meeting, but when they are, they, they can be big. So I think the planning board for, probably for both of us, we were, that was the one that seemed a little bit most uncertain. And you could certainly, you know, drop them off. But again, the committee would certainly, you know, would be important for them to engage with the planning board and think about how things are done. I mean, we, we've already in effect been running a little bit of an experiment by saying, well, let's do the land planning ones in the fall town meeting. I don't know how the planning board thinks that's going and whether they liked, they like to continue it or shift it back. I, I have no idea.
Sorry, I think just to, to respond to the, like, we should come up with a number. I'm, I'm not speaking for Wayne, but I feel comfortable with what we have proposed as potentials. I don't feel comfortable with sitting down and saying, these are the people, these are the groups that should be on it. That's what the select board should be doing. So if, if there are certain boards that you feel strongly should be on it, then that's what this discussion is all about. I do think that the select board and FinCom should be on it. Just because they are such a major part of the entire process. But then again, we're not saying, as you read this, we're not saying it's somebody who's right now doing it. It just has to be somebody who's knowledgeable about the process.
I guess I'm, I'm thinking that if it's, if, you know, if the major goal is to heighten citizen engagement, you need more citizens than you need board members on that committee. Because they're the ones, you know, they're the ones that are closest to the problem. So if you need change, you need to go to the people who are, you know, feeling the pain. And it's the, our citizens, we're not feeling, we go to the meeting. Nothing has to change for us to get to the meeting. So if, if one of your objectives is to get more people to come to the meeting, we need to have more people that aren't coming to the meeting to come to this committee. So I would say, you know, maybe have fewer committee and board members on it. Unless, you know, this new committee were to try to change some process that would make it impossible for us to do our work. I don't, you know, I don't know. I'm just.
I kind of look at it as like the Governance Task Force and, and one of the tack, the problems they were tackling and how that was set up. This, the, the, the select board has talked about this at several meetings about the declining attendance as well as just interest in town meeting. And I think that is, to me at least, central to what this should be studying and to, and I agree with Kate, to really, you've got to bring in, you know, newer citizens or newer voters, people in Carlisle and get them engaged in this process and learn about this because they may bring the new ideas. I think it's kind of the old, not to say that you can't have it all, you should have it all new people, but, and not all, longer-term residents is, is what I should say. But, no, but I think that's where it should be focused more. And yeah, you want the, you know, veterans who can come and, and give input and, and be a part of that whole process. But I think it should actually be, you know, newer residents or people who haven't been as engaged.
For him, I would agree with that, although I do, I do think that there needs to be a few people, one or two people on that board who really understand the current process.
Sure, I agree, but I'm, I'm wondering if they shouldn't be.
As ex officio and everything, but we're kind of over time. And so I just wanted to get a, a little bit of feedback because this isn't our committee. We were just asked to go out and build a charter for what we think could happen. This isn't what, this isn't our, our committee at all. And so do we have enough here that we can go out and start trying to get people engaged in the process? And just figure out, I, I would agree, the fewer people were currently on committees, the better. But I do think it probably should be two.
Or, or have them, have really firm, strong liaisons who actually go to every single meeting so that they can ex officio, I think. And, and let it.
Touch with what they're doing.
Maybe do it five and two instead of.
But I don't think it's, I don't think it's
Four and three.
Oversight, which is what that kind of rings through to me. It's, it's the active participation of what's going on. And so I think if you're, if we're saying this is it, but then all of a sudden we throw other people in, it's kind of just breaking the whole thing. It's, it's, you know, we're, we're proposing seven people plus Wayne as non-voting, so he's not part of the quorum. Does that seem like a good number? We can go out, we can try to find seven people. And, and then refine this further as we go along. I, I think, my opinion is this is like 95% of the way there and it's good enough to go out and try to find people. But I don't know what you all think.
Don't we have a process to find people now?
Yeah, I was just gonna, yeah.
And we do have.
How we outlined that policy for
Yeah, so we
Publicizing when we have a new committee.
That's what we would be.
So you'd be following that, yeah. It, um, just on that, I do think, given our experience with the Governance Task Force, that was conceived of as being a completely independent body from the select board or any other town agency, I think it would be good to have a direct connection. So yes, clearly this is a committee of the select board, but also that we have a person, whether it's a current or past select board member, who's going to be participating. I, I would say just, just so we don't have some of the, you know, false steps and starts that we, that we had for the task force, which did an amazing amount of work, but sometimes not.
And, and to be clear, Wayne and I talked about this, this is not a completely independent committee. This is, this is a committee put together by the select board, reportable to the select board. They're not going to be making these interim changes or these, these changes as they go along without coming to us first and saying, hey, here's something we think we should do, should we do it?
Yeah.
It, it would be reported to this board.
So I, I think I hear, Dave, David? Any?
No, I mean, I, I agree with pretty much everything I heard. I think it's a great idea. I agree with Nathan. I want to clarify what Nathan said. It's not about oversight. So I don't think liaisons are really even necessary particularly. Especially if they're going to weigh in. I agree that it should be mostly not people already holding office and either than, I guess, a couple of people who do know their way around the mechanics of town meeting. So I totally support it. I'm happy to move it forward today if that's expedient, but it sounds great.
Good, thank you. So I think you get the sense that there's a great deal of support and, and let's start moving it.
Thank you.
And, and sense of sort of when are we, you got any idea about sort of when? Or have set anything in your mind about when you'd like to have a, a group together to, and, and come bring it back to the select board to say yes.
So the, the timetable I had in my mind, I forget whether we spoke about this or not, was, you know, sort of bring, bring it here now. And I realize you're, you're out of time, so you probably don't want to take public input now. But the thinking was, you know, float it in one meeting, then come back at the next meeting, take any public input that, that you can get and then, and then finalize a decision at that, at that time. And, you know, as Nathan mentioned, we'd start, you know, recruiting, publicizing now. But then, you know, once that's done, which could be as soon as the next select board meeting, then you know, hopefully we get people to start submitting the applications. And I'm sorry, I, I couldn't find your, your new policy, so I don't, I'm not totally familiar with it. But my thought was that by mid-January or so, you should be able to appoint a group.
Okay, so our next meeting is on the 20, sorry, is on the 12th of December. So let's, we'll put it on the on the agenda.
So please send your comments to Ryan and Ryan will send them to us.
Great. Good, thank you.
Yeah, and I would also just say, members of the public, if there are also comments.
That's in fact, yes, members of the pub, public who have been listening to this, if you have comments, please send them to the town administrator for inclusion in our next packet.
Thank you everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Wayne.
Thank you.
Great. Tax classification hearing. Ken, are you going to be doing that or?
And see, I don't.
What I'd like to do is that Ryan do the presentation.
What I'd like to do is that Ryan do the presentation and maybe that wrap up.
Great. All right. Brian?
Do we have to officially open the hearing or is this not something we have to?
Good question.
I think I just need to be made presenter so that I can start sharing my screen to start the presentation.
Brian, we do, Brian, we need to have a motion to open the hearing.
Very well.
The select board vote to open the hearing on the, for the FY 2024 tax classification.
Well, there's, there's more to that. If you would.
There's a whole motion about the rates, but don't we want to have the presentation?
Okay, that's right. Right. Sorry.
Vote to open the hearing?
Yeah.
We could just do right off the agenda.
Okay, so we need to do a roll call vote.
To open the hearing?
Yeah. So would you do it from the agenda?
Okay, I move that we approve the opening of the tax classification hearing in accordance with the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 40, Section 56. The hearing will be held to the local tax levy to be borne by each class of real and personal property for year 2024.
Second.
Thank you. And we need a roll call vote because we have somebody or online.
Arnold, I.
Brown, I.
Oh, no, I.
You die?
No, I.
Thank you.
Okay, before we hear from Brian, I'm finding that the sound coming from people that are remote is very faint compared to what we've had in the past. So I don't know if there's a way to.
Can you not, can you hear me, Barney?
Yes, but it's, it's not very loud.
Where's our speaker when we have remote?
Just a moment. Let's see if I can fix that.
It sounds like it's coming from the monitor and not only one monitor.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. I'm working on this now. Just a moment.
Oh, there it is. Yeah.
Okay, try that, Brian.
Is that any better?
Yes, thank you.
Excellent.
Getting a little feedback now. Shall we turn off our microphones? Would that help?
I don't think we can. I couldn't turn mine off.
No. Okay.
We just get started into.
Great. Take it away, Brian.
Good evening, good evening, everybody. This is Brian McDonald, the principal assessor for the town of Carlisle. And on behalf of the Board of Assessors, which includes Ken Mestello, David Boardman, Karen Yehianman. Welcome to the fiscal year 2024 tax classification hearing. This evening, this presentation will provide the select board with the information necessary to vote on four different options for the shift of the local tax levy, both with, between and within the taxable real estate and personal property classes. The four options presented tonight will be the selection of a minimum residential factor, the selection of an open space discount, the granting of a residential exemption, and the granting of a small commercial exemption. Let's see. So the first thing that we, I thought we should start with is the calculation of the levy limit for fiscal 2024. That begins with the previous year's levy limit at $31,065,003. Then two and a half percent increase per proposition two and a half. We have the new growth associated with the additional taxable real and personal property captured at the conclusion of fiscal 2020, fiscal 23. Dead exclusions that added, that comes up with the maximum allowable levy. This is the maximum amount of revenue that the town can raise through the taxation of both local real and, or raised through local real and personal property taxation. The next would be the establishment of the fiscal 24 budget, which began with the appropriations at both May and the October town meetings of $36,960,512. You subtract from that number, the estimated receipts and revenues acquired from all sources, whether it be from cherry heat, state aid, or through other locally derived revenues such as excise tax. And that results in the, the tax levy or the amount of funds that are required to be raised through the taxation of, of local real estate and, or raised through the taxation of local real estate and personal property. The difference between the, the amount of money that could be raised and the amount of money that will be raised is the excess levy capacity. And that is something that's carried over on a year-to-year basis. Following that, the calculation of the single tax rate. So we begin with the tax levy, which is approved by the, the members of Carlisle Town Meeting, divided by the total assessed value of the community. That's the valuation of all taxable property established by the assessors department and certified by the Department of Revenue in October of this year. Divide the levy by the total assessed value, multiply it by a thousand, and that gives you the single tax rate. So we have the $30 million number that we derived from the previous slide, divided by this large number of 2.3 billion, which is the total value of all taxable real and personal property, which results in a single tax rate of $13.33 per thousand in valuation. Moving on, just wanted to state a few things about the development of values for fiscal 24. The chart on your, to your top left compares calendar year 21 to calendar year 22 from a single family sales data. Some important points that I wanted to highlight was the days on market went unchanged. Demand for Carlisle's residential real estate remains strong, carried over from the 2021 real estate market. The median list price did increase, although just slightly. But what the most important point is what I wanted to point out was the sale to list ratio, which remains above 100%. So therefore, sales prices are exceeding what the list prices were continuing on that strong demand for real estate from calendar 2021. Couple of things I wanted to point out is, or just to remind everybody that interest rates are a significant increase, up 3.31 over 2022 and did not affect Carlisle's residential real estate market. Another important point that I, I wanted to, that I noted from some information derived from the Department of Revenue's website was the Department of Revenue reported a significant increase in Carlisle's demographic changes associated with the income per capita, which increased $96,224 from the previous year. This is an increase of approximately 72% year over year. With regards to the valuation for fiscal 24, the starting assessment sales ratio was essentially 85.2% of full and fair cash value. That's up from the 80.2% that we began in, where adjustments began prior to fiscal 23, indicating that there wasn't as drastic of a change to the valuations as was required in fiscal 23. Adjustments were made to both land and building values in order to try to have a smoothing effect on the increases throughout the town. Unlike in fiscal 23, contemporary colonial building styles saw the largest valuation adjustments. And the average single family assessed value for fiscal 24 is up 8.6% to 1.1,222,690. Any questions so far?
I have a question, Brian.
Yes.
Can you go back on that? And I'm not, I'm driving, so I can't see the screen, but I read it earlier. This per capita increase, does that sound right to you? That sounds.
Well, we've had. That is directly from the Department of Revenue. So there, there, is this a one-year spike that you saw to Carlisle? I think there, there is the possibility that some of that may be associated with potential retirements as some people have indicated to me. I do think that this may be a, a large scale change to the people that are now moving into Carlisle that which began in calendar year 2021. While 2021 per capita income has not been released and that won't be until next year, I think it is my hunch that this has something to do with the continued appreciation of the residential real estate market here in Carlisle as well.
How much, but yeah, I mean, house prices, I get. So the house price increase makes sense to me. But the per capita sounds like a change in methodology. Which two years are you comparing to get that 17% or whatever?
The 72% increase? I, David, that's, I'm glad that you, you mentioned that. I can tell you, I will go into this further later on in the presentation. Not only that, I will also have some links to the Department of Revenue site directly so that you can examine that information on your own. And that will also be available to the public as well when I place this presentation up, available for, available to the public.
I would just say, somebody, maybe it's Ryan, ought to contact the DOR and see if there was a change in methodology. The 72% year over year, no, none of those, the changes you mentioned are happening, but not year over year. So I'll, I'll leave it at that. But I really think we've got to find out if they changed the rules somehow.
What year? Oh, do you have a response, Ken?
Make a comment on what Brian had to say and all specifically to, to David's questions. I think one of the things.
I'm gonna stop you. You have to introduce yourself, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Ken Mestello. I'm the chair of the Board of Assessors. What I wanted to just add to that comment is, I think one figure that would be interesting to see in this is the median change in income versus the average or mean change in income. And I say that because one of my board members pointed out that someone could very well have cashed out on stock options, have seen a, you know, a, a seven or eight figure windfall from that. And in a town with 1,800 households, that can drive up an average rather substantially. Okay. Versus a median, which would really not be all that impacted at all. So just one point to make about that.
And what year is this, are these numbers from? The income per capita table number one, Brian, is that from?
That is, that is from calendar year 2020. So.
Okay, so comparing it to the year before, 2019?
Correct.
This is the, comparing it to the year before COVID began and then the year that COVID hit us in 2020. Okay. Okay.
I only, my only reason for bringing this to everyone's attention is is this partly, is the change in this democrat, demographic information or this data, is this leading us towards who the new, who the the new home buyers are here in Carlisle? Is this associated with residents that are already here? It may just explain some of the continued appreciation in the demand for the real estate here within Carlisle. And especially considering the, the interest rate increase over 20, calendar 22 or 22 to 23 showing it, but not having really any effect on the demand for real estate as, as indicated through the sale to list ratio information that I provided, as well as the continued increase to the median sale price here in town.
I guess I just want to, it's partly a question, but also I guess a comment. I think that Carlisle, I may be wrong, but I believe historically has always kind of weathered the big downturns a little bit better. And I think part of it is the, the environment that we have here, the schools that we have here, and we will attract, we will attract people and we will, you know, that our home prices will continue to go up. I, I, you know, and so it's interesting as a component of maybe understanding how it is that people can be affording more and more expensive homes. But I'm struggling a little bit to figure out how per capita income really factors into what we should be, you know, like what our assessments are.
It is.
That does that, right?
It doesn't, it is not, it has no effect on the bearing of directly of, of reporting or making adjustments to the valuations that I, that I adjust annually. It is more of a reflection of the changing demographic makeup of the people of Carlisle, I think, which is, may explain or does explain the continued demand, regardless of the increase by the, by the federal government to the federal funds rate increasing interest rates and the inelastic demand for real estate through the continued appreciation and the continued demand for real estate, even with the drop in the number of sales, may be attributable to the people that are now moving to Carlisle. That's where I think it was the most important point that, that should be derived from that information.
I think it also really highlights for us the needle that we're always trying to thread between the people who are, who have been here, who have more modest incomes or on a fixed income and wanting to stay in Carlisle. And the people who are wanting to come into Carlisle, who have many, many more resources or perhaps, you know, they're, they're here now and they want to spend more on schools, but they're, you know, I, I think it demonstrates the, the, the needle that we're constantly trying to thread when we're coming up with our annual budget. Yeah.
Great.
Any further?
Brian?
Any further questions?
No, I'm not seeing any.
Okay. So moving on now, just to, that was all a backdrop to this first option, which is the selection of a minimum residential factor. You can see the classification options table to the right indicates the various options available at the various CIP shifts that you see within that column. On the second column, the CIP shift, which ranges from between one and 1.150, that being the maximum CIP shift available to, for the town of Carlisle. So you can see a factor of one would be a CIP, essentially foregoing any type of a CIP shift, which would establish a single tax rate where both the residential and open space classes would pay exactly the same rate as the commercial, industrial and personal property taxes, tax classes. And once again, that would be at the, the $13.33 per thousand rate that was calculated earlier in the presentation. At the average single family tax bill, at the value that was provided earlier as well. Given that average single family value of 1, 1.22 million, the average single family tax bill with a CIP shift of one, a single tax rate would be $16,298. Should, let's see, as we continue here. And my, I apologize, my screen seems to be frozen. And I apologize. Let's see. I am so sorry here. I have. I heard that, Kate.
We got subtitles.
There we go. There we go. There we go. Okay. So the selection of a split tax rate will shift some of the tax burden. Let's see if I can shut that off. From the, uh, residential open space classes to the commercial industrial property classes for a maximum C I P shift of one fifty, as I had indicated. Um, however, given the, well, I'll point out columns number two, three and four, that it represents the total va, the percentage of each class as a total valuation of the community. As you can see, the residential open spaces, uh, is overwhelmingly, uh, the majority, uh, assumes the majority of the valuation within the town of Carlisle at ninety-eight point one-nine percent. So even with the maximum C I P shift of one fifty, that would only bring the contribution of the residential open space class down to ninety-seven point two-eight, which would afford the average single-family ta, um, tax bill, but only a hundred and fifty dollars in savings over the course of, uh, fiscal two thousand and twenty-four. So with that said, the Board of Assessors recommend, recommends a residential factor of one and a single tax rate for all property classes of thirteen dollars and thirty-three cents. Are there any questions?
This is, this is what we have done every year, right? And is this something the Select Board has done? I'm just remembering, or did it go to town meeting?
No, no, we have always done it. Melissa used to bring it to us, but it never, we never had. That was. Brian. Do you want to do these all at once? Yeah, I think we'll do them all at once. So rather than having the, a vote for each of these.
Yeah, just let him.
For things.
The whole, uh, the other three.
Yeah.
I, I do have to, I know that, um, I've made a recommendation here. The, I will say that, um, the results of the, at least the, some of the other votes are continued upon the vote by the Select Board on this option number one.
Okay, this, this, then can I have a motion to set this?
Go ahead. Just ask a, a process question. This is a public hearing and there are people here, should we hear from the public?
Yeah, yes. Is there anybody here in the room? And can we see who's, if there are any hands raised online? Anybody online that has any questions, comments, concerns? Okay, seeing none, I think we are ready for a motion on this portion of the presentation.
And is that the motion that's in the packet?
Yes, that first one, yes.
Would you like me to read that?
Please.
I move that the Select Board, for the purpose of setting the fiscal two thousand twenty-four property tax rate, approve a residential factor of one, thereby establishing a uniform tax rate with no difference between the residential, open space property classes and the commercial, industrial, personal property, property classes. And that the board.
No, I think that's, we stop, stop right there.
Okay, so we don't want to go on to the other two, but just vote on this one.
Yeah.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion from the board? Um, I don't think, uh, it's a hearing, so I think I'm going to do a roll call vote on this.
Arnold, I.
Brown, I.
Wood, I.
Reed, I. Snell, I. Great, that passes. Thank you. Okay, Brian?
Sure. If I could, the reasoning behind making the vote one by one, um, while in Carlisle, it may not be as important because of that, um, the overwhelming size of that residential open space class and the really not being a debate as to whether to split the percentage and create a split tax rate. The following votes are continued upon what happens in vote one. So in other communities, it can affect the other votes that are coming down, um, the, the other, the other options that I'm about to present. So that's why it's, it's important that the votes be made in order. With that said, um, this, um, this slide here, before we quickly move on, just gives you the, you know, a chart, um, indicating the average single-family tax bill history of Carlisle dating back to two thousand and fifteen. So you can see the average single-family tax bill, um, increased by three hundred and sixty-eight dollars from fiscal two thousand and twenty-three. Um, this represents a two-point-three-one percent increase from the previous fiscal year. Moving on, option number two, the granting of an open space discount. Open space is land that is not otherwise classified, which is not taxable under the provisions of Chapter sixty-one, sixty-one A or sixty-one B, that would be chapter land, or taxable under a, a permanent conservation restriction in which land is not held for the production of income such as chapter land, but is main, maintained in an open natural condition, which contributes significantly to the benefit and enjoyment of the public. This allows for up to a twenty-five percent discount, creates a separate tax rate for open space, which is classified as two hundred properties, shifts the tax burden to all other residentially classified properties. So this would create a split tax rate between the one hundred, the residential class and the open space class. This is why it would be important, you would, you would establish the percentage born in vote one, but you could actually shift from the open space class to the residential class. If, uh, if an open space discount was granted, and that's why that vote is important. Um, just some information about this, um, the open space discount. Out of three hundred and fifty-one communities, only sixteen have properties that are classified as open space in fiscal twenty-three. Only one of those sixteen communities granted an open space discount. Um, Carlisle already has thirty-five properties that are receiving the chapter land exemption. Uh, Carlisle does not have any properties currently classified as open space, which is two hundred land use. I think what I'm, I'm trying to emphasize here, this is a very seldomly used and exercised, um, option, as you can see, only one community currently grants that. We currently do not have any parcels that are classified as open space. I think the, uh, the wording that is used, which contributes significantly to the benefit enjoyment of the public is rather ambiguous. I think that, uh, from my discussions with, uh, um, my peers in the communities that do have, um, two hundred classified properties, they encourage the use of the, uh, the chapter land process if for those property owners looking to seek a property tax exemption. I think this, uh, this is beneficial or, um, is, is a better option for the, for the town. Uh, for two ways, one, it allows for the, um, rollback tax process to reclaim some of that tax benefit, should the owner decide to sell or convert that land for other purposes. Uh, furthermore, it also provides the town with the opportunity, uh, for the right of first refusal, should the owner decide to go about and sell that property. So while it's not applicable for fiscal twenty-four, um, I think that, uh, I just wanted to give further background as to why, um, the granting of an open space discount, uh, is unadvisable moving forward, should we ever do have any property that's classified as, uh, two hundred. So a vote is not required here. Are there any questions?
I don't see any unless there's some, um, line again, sorry.
Okay.
I'm monitoring, okay, thanks. There are no questions.
Moving on, so option number three, um, residential, residential exemption. So the resident, uh, it reduces the assessed value of a qualified residential property by a percentage of the average assessed value of all residentially classified properties between zero to thirty-five percent. The average assessed residential value is this, uh, number you see before you. This is the total of the entire residential property class. Those would be the one hundred class divided by the total number of parcels within that, uh, that residential class. Um, some of the criteria for the, that would, for qualifying is it must be a residential property, single-family condominium, two-family. It must be owner-occupied as of January first of two thousand and twenty-three. Um, based off my analysis, it would appear as though that, uh, seventeen hundred and fifteen out of the nineteen hundred and ninety-two parcel, uh, residential parcels would qualify. So a large percentage of these properties here in Carlisle would, would qualify, should this be enacted. So what this table here indicates what the, uh, the implications of a residential, of the, of the implementation of a residential exemption at five percent increments. And the effect that would have on the, uh, the average single-family value, not the value stated to the left in the first table that was presented, but the average single-family value. You can see that it would have some effects if, uh, a residential exemption was implemented, um, down to, you know, through thirty-five percent. You can see it would be approximately five hundred and fifty dollars with the implementation of a thirty-five percent residential exemption. I do think that does come, uh, with some concerns. I think that, uh, would result in essentially progressive tax. You would see, because of the percentage that would be exempted, you would see those properties of a higher valuation absorbing, uh, the increase that the lower, uh, lower-valued properties would be saving. So once again, a progressive tax. The res, this, this chart, uh, is reflective of the communities that currently have implemented, uh, a residential exemption. I have, uh, I know that Concord has implemented one for fiscal twenty-four. So of the eighteen communities that have adopted a residential exemption, seventeen of these communities, um, fall within one of two categories. Either have a high percentage of unqualified residential property. So that would be apartments, uh, and rental properties that you would see in communities such as Boston, Brookline, Cambridge and Somerville, or a high percentage of second homes as, uh, which a number of these communities fall on Cape Cod, where there are a lot of second homes, which allows those communities to offer savings to people that live, uh, and occupy their, their home year-round. So I think that's where you see the majority of these to, with the exception to Concord. And that would be the outlier community. Um, I think the first year they have decided to implement this is at, uh, a ten percent exemption. Um, I think there is, this could serve as the ideal case study for Kyle, Carlisle moving forward. Um, based off some of the information that's publicly available in Concord, I do think that they're, um, they're not certain as to the financial implications of implementing, um, a residential exemption. I know from what I've researched so far, their, their overlay account, their budget is approximately, excuse me, three times the size of Carlisle's. However, their overlay account is ten times the size. And in the first year, there is a large risk of underestimating the number of qualifiers for the residential exemption, which means you're not, you're, uh, you're not factoring in those exemptions within, with the establishment of the tax rate. So when that occurs, if someone were to qualify after the tax rate was set, that reduction, if they were to qualify, much like a, an abatement or an exemption, that would draw down on the overlay account balance. So I think there is some concern there from, from what I have read. I know that, uh, from Mashpee is also, uh, another recent adoptee. And I know that they have, um, based off of my discussions and my, um, my, my review of their classification hearing, there is concern by the Assessors Department and the Board of Assessors there of what could happen if the exemption is not phased in, um, at a slower rate. That's, I think there was pushback to go to the full thirty or thirty-five percent there. Uh, but with that said, uh, I do think that there is a real opportunity to, um, to study this further and what the implications for Carlisle would be for fiscal twenty-five. But for fiscal twenty-four, um, the board does not recommend, uh, a residential exemption of any percentage. Are there any questions?
Brian?
Yes.
I'm back in the flesh here. Um, so the theory, I get the theory where you have rich people with second homes and you want to encourage, you know, year-round residents and like we might do for, say, seniors or something. Do you know, and I presume you're in contact with your Concord counterpart, what's their theory?
What is their theory with regards to?
Trying this.
Um, I, I think there, from what I have read, um, I know that the, based off of the, the minutes of Select Board meetings there, there is concern that this would, should there be a wave of applicants that do qualify and it has not been factored into the tax rate, um, process as we are, you know, going through here today, that if there are a large number of qualifiers following the setting of the tax rate, that should the overlay be depleted, that would leave the town in the financial predicament of having to go back to May Town Meeting and, uh, supplementally fund that overlay account. And that could, uh, you know, drawing down on funds that were intended to be budgeted for either the, for next year or released as free cash. Uh, I just think that the, the best-case scenario is where the exemption is fully funded within the overlay account or better yet, is, is accounted for through the tax rate setting process with some percentage of, um, protection within the overlay. As I stated, the overlay account is approximately a hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars here. Um, based off my estimates as of today, with the establishment of fiscal twenty-four, I think there was, there was a large drawdown in fiscal twenty-three due to abatement and exemption activity. I think if you're looking what the average single-family value is of, or the average fifth, single-family tax bill here at just over sixteen thousand dollars, I don't think that gives Carlisle a lot of leeway for, should there be a number of qualifying properties that come in after the tax rate is set, that could potentially leave Carlisle in the situation or better yet, myself and the Board of Assessors having to go back for additional funding within that account to, to fund those that, this process.
I'd like to just address David's question. David asked if we understood what the rationale was for Concord moving forward with this plan. The answer is, we really don't. We've speculated.
Then we just talk to them.
Uh, we do plan on talking to them, but that's been discussed also. But this is a relatively new development.
Right.
Uh, so we are, we really just learned about it.
So Ken, I, the question really that, it's like our senior, you know, tax discount. Can we set the rules? Brian's talking about a run on the bank, basically. You offer it and everybody. And then you got too many people and now you run out of money. But can you set the rules in a way, like, that's why I asked the goals, right? They must, Wealthleak must have set the rules, like, you have to live twelve months a year in your, you know, there's some rule, right? And then people can only qualify. So Brian's presentation says, you know, most of our houses would qualify, but I don't know what that means, because that sounds like a wide net.
Well, I, it's a question of, are you below the, the average or above the average? Uh, if you're below the average, you qualify for a.
But I mean, can you say you have to be sixty-five or older? You have to be retired. Can you put those kinds of things?
I have not heard that mentioned, and I don't know if you know the answer, Brian, on that one plan.
I do. There are no statutory limitations with regards to the, the, who could qualify. It is specifically, uh, limited to those who are domiciled within that community. So that was some of the concerns that Mashpee had, is that if you can, if you have this type of, of, uh, tax incentive, uh, does this, does this incentivize people with, uh, larger or higher-valued homes in Mashpee to change their domicile to that community in order to take advantage of that, uh, residential exemption?
Let me just add a little historical perspective on this, because we've addressed this. Obviously with the Select Board in years past, this has been around for a while. We have never seriously ever considered this as an option in Carlisle. Uh, because as you can see there, with the one notable exception now of Concord, all of these communities have rather unique. Because as you can see there, with the one notable exception now of Concord, all these communities have rather unique residential property considerations, whether it's a high percentage of investor owned properties, vacation homes, there are circumstances far different from what we customarily have. Enacting this is a rather serious consideration. I mean, you are dramatically changing the way taxes are assessed.
It's a tool and I'm, you know, I want to build back on what Nathan said earlier, threading the needle. I mean, we have a real issue maintaining generational, you know, continuity. And if we're facing this demographic, I wanted, I certainly, I mean, I realize that a lot of the things that you guys are bringing up go well beyond setting the tax rate, but they're very pertinent demographic trends that we need to understand. So that one about the income, and we looked at some statistics here. And by the way, that number is five hundred million. So if you think five hundred million is the right number, that might be it. In other words, the difference between the twenty three net or total income and the twenty four was five hundred million dollars. So that could be one, one, one billionaire, right? Right? So that could be, and then that's not really an issue. But the longer term trend that Brian, you know, spoke to where partly as a result of pandemic and who knows what, different kind of people are moving in, you know, and we want to keep seniors living here, that this is a tool that maybe in years past we would have ignored, but we maybe don't want to ignore it. If we can set rules, so it's not abused.
It would make a lot of sense to explore why Concord is doing what they're doing.
Yeah. And to and to understand what how we might structure something should we want to do anything like this? How would that work? Yeah.
Great. Okay. That was three out of four, right?
Yes. So are we moving on here now?
We are.
Okay.
Oh, I thought my hand raised.
Is it appropriate to have a question?
Yeah.
Oh, yes.
This is a hearing. So yes, could you come to the microphone and please identify yourself?
Hi, it's Debbie Bentley, one twenty eight Gilroy. I I just, this is a question for Brian. Is there any research to show that adopting this kind of methodology will help maintain a diversity in the town or non, you know, with wealth, basically? Is there any research being done on that, do you know?
I don't know whether I have come across any of that information. I can tell you that I know that that was the implementation. One of the select board members in Mashpee mentioned this specifically and why he was encouraging them to push the residential percentage beyond the ten percent that they were going to implement this year with against the the board of assessors and the principal assessors recommendation to to have a phased in implementation as was as was recommended by the Department of Revenue. But this specific select board member in Mashpee mentioned the intent to protect or from the gentrification of that community for longer term residents as we do have here in Carlyle. And it is my understanding from what I saw that they they table that that the discussion for further further study because they were there was not a consensus on whether to adopt that ten percent for for this year. There was division on the board itself. I can say that the information is incomplete. I don't think that there really is a, a, a a true similar community that has adopted this exemption. And when I mentioned Concord being the perfect example, I I do think that there's no other community that is more comparable on this list than than Concord themselves to Carlyle. I would be, I've already expressed intent to study this extensively before heading into the summer so that we have a complete study and present both my board and with the select board with the findings of of what happened in Concord's first year and to see if if it was successful and to provide as much data as I can prior to this hearing next year so that the board has that information as they go through the same process. But I didn't think it was a pertinent. I didn't think it was a good idea to recommend it, nor did the board of assessors given the concerns that I was, that I read about from or both in Mashpee and in Concord. But I I would think that that is the intent of this type of exemption is to to is to provide incentive not only to those who live and occupy, but also to to assist those long term residents with the the ever increasing tax bills in every community.
Great. Thank you. I have a gentleman here. Could you
Water, two thirty five Fifth Street.
Thank you.
So I have a question and just a general comment because I've been kind of on the other side of this in another town. Question is, the chart shows what happens at the different values of exemption. I get that, but it doesn't show us what happens on the other end. So if you're exempting, if people's taxes are going down, as this chart shows, somebody else's are going up. And it doesn't show that, you know.
I saw one of the earlier chats there, but I maybe I'm just missing it.
So if if I can, you know, pre in the previous years, I have, last year I provided a a dynamic spreadsheet that did reflect exactly what you're looking at. Are you able to see this chart that I'm looking at now, sir?
Yeah. Blow it up a little bit.
Sure. I'll see if I can be, if I can in pull this in so that you can see exactly what I'm referring to. So this this Excel spreadsheet provided an impact of both the residential factor selection at the top, but more important, importantly, I wanted to show you this bottom chart, which reflects the impact of the selection of a residential exemption at different percentages here, sir. So here is the average residential value and right here, this is the number of qualifying parcels. This is the same table that I provided you or a summary of that, but on to the right here, you would see the impact of the implementation of a residential exemption at various different amounts, sir. So if we can begin at zero, you can see that there's no shift. What you see green highlighted here is the average single family value. And the and what you're going to see is the tax bill savings in column four is what the effect would be of the implementation of a residential at various exemption amounts, and I can scroll through those for you. So at ten percent, you could see that there would be nominal savings to the average single family value here at approximately a hundred and forty eight dollars. You would see significant savings to properties below eight hundred, eight hundred thousand here in Carlyle. But you're exactly right. The it as a progressive tax, those tax savings for those properties below the average single family value or approximately one point three, as you can see, is is just about a net zero would would progressively increase and see those savings from the lower valued properties passed on to the higher valued homes.
So yeah, that that's perf, that's beautiful. Now I completely can see that. So I just want to make a comment about this exemption. Because I've been involved, I mean, I've, it's been, if it could affect me down the road. I I think there's two things that trouble me with this. One is that for for the towns like Cambridge and Boston, it hurts renters. And which is weird to me because you're trying to help people a lot of times in that position, and yet you are charging them for taxes for people who own property. And it's always easy to pick. I don't know how they do that, but but I guess my point is that it troubled me that, wow, you you're really taxing the renters. Because the owners sooner or later, if you tax them too much, they're going to sell the property or or they're going to raise the rents. So I I think of it that way. Maybe other people don't think about it that way. As far as the other towns are concerned, to me, it's simple what's going on there. The non residents don't get to vote. And so consequently, the people who vote you know, I'm a resident, I vote, sure, I want you to pay more for me to pay less, which troubles me a little.
I don't think that's the case, like on those, it's the non residents who vote.
Non residents can't vote in a town. So a non resident can't vote. So if I'm a resident in a town and they say, we're going to charge all the non residents twice the tax rate so that I can save some money. Yeah, that's great, you know. So I look at that chat a little differently than I guess other people may look at that chat. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
But looking at that, Brian, just, yeah, I gotta speed up, but I want to go back to something we talked about earlier, which is using the median rather than the average because your math will be out of whack if your median, your average don't line up, and then you will be in trouble. Shouldn't it be the median so that as many houses above and below balance themselves out?
Um, that's a great point, David. I think that if you're looking at from this chart, you can see the break even point is right around, you know, one point three. If that's the break even point, so whether that, whether that's the actual median, median valuation for the community. I don't have that information immediately, but there is a break even point where that is. I I'm I don't think that I can present that to you right now. But what I can tell you is that with my discussions with the board, this was not a recommended option this year.
It's okay, Brian, we have to move along. So
Sure. Okay.
That question at another time. So let's move on to number four.
Okay. So small commercial exemption reduces the assessed value of all qualified commercial property by a percentage between zero and ten percent. Tax savings are shifted to other commercial property. Qualifications, three hundred class, less than one million. All businesses on the property must have an average annual appointment of less than ten people. So there are only two in Carlyle. The you can see five and ten percent for columns one and two. The the amount that would be shifted, the biggest concern with this exemption is that you're not guarantee of the business occupying the property would would see that property savings. The landlord may or may not pass along the savings to the business owners who you would hope that would reap the benefits of this type of an exemption. So for that reason, the board does not recommend a small commercial exemption of any percentage either. Any questions?
Are there any online?
I'm sorry?
I'm asking Ryan to check the online. Okay, so there's no questions.
Okay. Before we, you know, and I I'm trying not to be long here, but I would be remiss with trying to I really want to recap what's happened this past year. So fiscal twenty three, we had ninety abatement applications, which is five percent of all the single family homes here in Carlyle. Sixty were deck houses based off of the large or disproportionate increase they saw in fiscal twenty three due to the twenty one sales activity. We had eighteen meetings over five months and spent over forty two hours in meetings, both addressing the public and addressing these ninety abatements. So what we came out of that is issues with the data quality with regards to the lack of the recent cyclical inspection data, a lot of it was outdated, leading to overestimated condition and quality. We had data inconsistencies between properties and undocumented renovations and additions that weren't accounting to accurately value those properties. The deck and through this, we also learned that there are communication and transparency issues that we thought we could improve upon. Property owners were unaware of the drastic drastic valuation changes that were forthcoming. And there were some valuation process concerns as well, specifically related to the the building style classifications. So when I started in February of twenty two, only forty seven percent of the properties were compliant for the ten year cyclical inspection. Forty nine percent of all building permits were closed within my database. What does that tell me? Why is that important? Is that there were fifty one percent of the permits that were not closed? So I had no idea whether these properties had been inspected and were being properly valued based off of the permitted work that was supposed to be conducted. So just an update here, as of November of twenty three, there were four hundred and forty one property inspections conducted in twenty twenty three. That's twenty four percent of all the Carlyle properties. Seventy six percent of all properties are compliant with a ten year inspection. Property review internally, so eighty seven percent of all building permits are now closed with two hundred and two older permits between ninety six and twenty twenty, adding over two million in new growth value. Also improved property information. I know there was a request for further details on the property record cards. With that said, I know we have added approximately six hundred permits pre nineteen ninety two to provide a better comprehensive permit history for all of the properties here in Carlyle. So with regards to communication and transparency, so with Ryan's assistance, the Deck House Advisory Committee was established. Response to homeowner concerns regarding the valuation and communication concerns provided an open dialogue between both the board of assessors or and and the community itself. So one of some of the things that we initiated was annual public disclosure for two weeks prior to the approval submission for approval for the Department of Revenue to provide the public an opportunity to review those values. We have a former assessor that's currently conducting it or has in conducted inspections in up through November of this year and will be rejoining to conduct additional inspections once the spring hits in March. We've consolidated the ambiguous building style and classifications by eliminating two from between twenty three and twenty four. And one of the things I wanted to address is that the board of assessors and I are also committed to studying and in the review of a new mid century modern building style to seek public input in the spring of two thousand twenty four. There simply wasn't enough time to to effectively income do this study prior to fiscal twenty four due to Kim constraints. But we are committed to further study and seeking comment about this opportunity come the spring with prior to the fiscal twenty five valuation cycle. Getting back to David, this may have interest you. I know this will and potentially others at home, I will post this later. This has links to all the Department of Revenue information that's been presented here. This comes directly from their website and how they're reporting it. It's possible this may answer your question, David, as to where they're deriving this in this information or whether that's changed from year to year. Just quickly, what I wanted to reflect here is Carlyle is the third one from the left. You can see where it benchmarks in comparison to all of these other communities. I know my discussions with with Ryan McLean and others has mentioned that I think it was Sherburne was considered to be very comparable with the the town of Carlyle, as you can see. Very comparable now with regards to the per capita income of many of these communities across the board now. So as you, and more importantly, you can see one five year change, Carlyle is exceeds all of these other communities. And last but not least, this chart here just showing the change from one year, five year and ten year changes. Does this, I think this is as further support as this may be a contributor to the change in the the valuation or the new homeowner here in Carlyle. Debbie has a question?
Actually, we're going to have Debbie, unless this is a very important and adding information, I really need to get my motion out and we have to be moving along.
Debbie, I would happily take your question later if it's for me. All right. Okay.
Nathan, were you going to make the motion?
I move. I move that the select board for the purposes of setting fiscal year twenty twenty four tax rate not grant an open space discount, not adopt a residential exemption and not adopt a small commercial exemption for fiscal year twenty twenty four. That's repetitive.
Second. I'm going to do roll call. Arnold, I.
May I amend my motion?
Yeah, if you want to do the furthermore.
This is important.
Okay.
Furthermore, we acknowledge that the board of assessors has informed the select board that the excess levy capacity for fiscal year twenty twenty four is three million, six hundred and thirty eight thousand, four hundred and seventy one dollars.
Do you accept the, who seconded that?
I did. Second amended motion.
Okay. Roll call. Arnold, I.
Brown, I. Red, I.
Reed, I. Snell, I. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you for your time. Sorry to take. Have a nice evening.
I'm just gonna shut Ryan down at, you know, three minutes of, he'll be like, what's his name?
Okay, joint meeting with the municipal facilities committee. I'd like to invite anybody who wants to speak for the municipals. Uh, I'd like to invite anybody who wants to speak for the Municipal Facilities Committee to join us more or less here at the table. Certainly add a microphone. Do you need to open a meeting?
I, it. I, I think we do. If it's a, we do have a court.
Yes, so.
I would like to open a meeting of the Municipal Facilities Committee.
Do you need a roll call for that? Sorry. No.
Did we close the hearing?
Usually do. We have to, do we have the closed hearing first?
Uh, I think, yes. Okay, go ahead.
I move that we close the tax classification hearing.
Second.
Roll call.
Roll call. Arnold, I.
Brown, I.
Red, I.
Reed, I.
Snow, you missed it.
Snow.
He wants the hearing to go on.
Okay. Back to you guys.
Take it away.
Well, I, I think the first thing that we were going to talk about was the charge for the facilities.
Yes. Yeah, you have to just about have this thing in your mouth in order to speak. So, um.
If you can't hear yourself amplified, then no one can hear you.
Okay.
Okay. I believe we all read the charge. Did anybody have any comments or questions they wanted to ask?
I did.
Okay, take it away.
So, uh, one question I have is that, um, it says that at least, um, one member should be from the school committee, but none of the school buildings are within the scope. And so I was just wondering. You know, when it lists, when it lists the buildings, it does not list any of the school buildings. I was wondering, is that something that was left out? Or, you know, why must there be a school committee member if there's no talk about the school buildings?
Well, that does, right now, we're in this kind of interim state where the, um, the town facilities and the school facilities are being kind of co-managed by Stephen Kinnearney and Steve Bastick. So having a representative of the, of the school committee present, I, I think is a good thing. Whether that's necessary going forward, not sure, but for now, I think it's a good thing.
So I guess, uh, maybe to touch the third rail, um, should, should there, should there be a time when this charter is including the school buildings? I mean, who's doing the long-term capital planning? Of those school bill, of the school buildings? Yeah, I agree. I thought, no, I mean, I thought it now, the time is now, right?
I think now. I think we have to act as if.
Well, there, there, I, I have two issues with this. One, one is the fact that the school is not under the purview of the MFC. And if we're moving forward to this merged condition, then I think it should be. Um, and the other talks about, um, the MFC shall authorize and oversee a designated town employee. Since we're moving toward a maintenance department, that department, um, is part of the town machinery and should be authorized by the town administrator and the select board with the cooperation of the facilities committee. But I don't think it should be the responsibility of the facilities committee.
You just picked up on my second question. Thank you.
Yeah, I had the same question, same thought.
I have maybe a next to that question, and that is, um, the phrase reviewing maintenance activities for all such town facilities, uh, and what you exactly meant by that? Because it was my impression that we're trying to move the Municipal Facilities Committee up, up a rung or two, um, into not getting their hands dirty and reviewing maintenance activities, but more prioritizing jobs, doing the long-term capital needs, you know, being very much involved in the policy, not in the day-to-day.
So may I ask just a quick question before you answer that? Because maybe I totally misunderstood what this charter was because the way you worded it was that the municipal facilities had, had worded this is, is, is this the charter that the Municipal Facilities Committee is currently under, right here, unedited?
Yes.
So this is, this is a, this is the charter that the Board of Selectmen created, not the Municipal Facilities Committee.
Last year.
Right, updated, updated last year. Okay.
So what's before us now is more, uh.
What do we want to change?
Doing it, yeah. A new, a new charter. Okay.
Okay. I just want that.
I was looking at this. I thought that this was a newly drafted.
No.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I would hope that if we're getting anything that's newly drafted, it would have red lines so that we know what's changed.
Yeah, right. Yeah.
Right.
Right, so we have, I think we got confused because ESC proposed a change that ignores all those other changes, right? We're not there yet, right?
Right, right.
So do we want to, um, given the, the timing, um, for tonight, I'm just wondering if it would make sense to have the MFC come forward with a proposed change or maybe in consultation with, uh, you know, the town administrator and whoever else and then show, you know, the old one and then the proposed changes and then we could have a discussion about it.
Yeah, I think we're, we're headed that direction anyway. I know Jim O'Shea had reached out and wanted to have a meeting, um, in, in setting something up. And I think that, you know, with more community input, um, alongside that meeting, you know, we will be in a better position as the select board to then potentially revamp this charter. I just think that process-wise.
Just to be clear, you know, there, there are two issues that have been raised. They're not, they're related, but they're not the same issue. So there's the issue of whether whatever it does should extend to schools because we're trying to integrate schools. So we agree. And then the other one is the Kate, what Kate said, you know, should they be more of a board and less of a doers?
I think both of those can be incorporated with that.
Oh, yeah, no, they will be. And I'm just saying Jim's meeting is about the first one.
First one, right.
We generally, I think, are moving towards trying to make all the boards, including our own board, less operational and more board-like, right?
So I think you'll find this, this, the schools are worried about the second piece of that, right? Um, and there's also a third discussion needs to happen about funding. So how does the funding work, especially when you add the school committee, which has its own, own authority to, to some of these issues? But just from a, just to give a little context of discussion, and I'm, I'm sorry to jump in. The, um, outside perspective, the third-party structural viewing of this is the school has a highly developed maintenance department that's well-staffed and has been running for a while. So they understand the day-to-day maintenance and then people might, you know, disagree or not on, on their direction, but they've been doing that for a while, whereas the town is trying to build, um, a staff department and has a well-developed, long-term plan and, um, volunteer structure guiding it. So the schools don't have that second piece, which is the, the structure to guide it and the long-term focus. So when you blend the two, um, you'll, I think you'll see that the, the school committee is concerned that the day-to-day operations would get disrupted because it's, because it's functioning well, but they would like help with the long-term and the funding. And on the town side, we want to really cement a structure, but we already have a well-developed, um, financial plan and, and operation. So that's really the.
I guess, if I may, I think, um, just, just a couple of things. I, I do think that it would be worthwhile, since they've sat here all night for us, to give them feedback on this draft charter rather than say, hey, go and see, but there's something else, you know, if there's something you want to put into it. Well, this is. They just, they just, they just went through this. So I, I do think that if we have comments, we should give it to them now. But just one comment, um, Ryan, on what you just said, I think, and, and I, you know, I shouldn't say this, but we are still often surprised by capital expenses and by expenses at the school. And so I think that taking a look, a long-term capital look across all of our buildings is important because it's not functioning all that well in the school when it comes to the HVAC that we're, we're getting the, the request for and, and things. So there's, there's something still broken there that, um, having an oversight town-wide, I think would help us with those budgeting items.
I, I guess, Nathan, to answer your original question about why one, one school committee member was, was because we were trying to work towards this, um, cooperative thing, and we needed the school committee to be, you know, have a hand in it and not go off into a corner and then spring it on them. So, um, and now that it's done, I, we're, now that we're, you know, we're getting towards the goal, I would say you would still want to have, uh, a school committee member as well as a select board member on the MFC for the long-term capital needs for the entire town.
Can I just say something? At least from my point of view, I'm not speaking for anybody other than myself, um, on the school committee. I said on this board, I said on the school committee, um, we just need, and I know it's hard because everybody's under open meeting. That's what we need. We need to get everybody together because we come and we talk and then I talk at school committee, but we don't all talk together.
Right.
So, you know, we start going, okay, well, this is good and these guys are working this. Well, what, what happens with that? Well, that's left for it. And it's MFC and school committee talking, not with you. Like, we need, we need all the participants at the table to go, okay, this is going to happen. This is going to happen. This is, and this all works together. And so that's what I at least know from our side, like, we just, there's plenty of stuff that can get done. It's just we all have to get together and say, okay, we can do this, which is hard in open meeting. So.
Okay.
Agreed.
Well, so I guess I don't really think this is a graft, um, because I think we're going to have to create a new draft. This is the old model. This is not a draft of anything going forward, in my opinion, but most humble opinion.
So.
Can, can I, what, what do you think the role of the MFC should be for the next five to 10 years? Given that you've been doing it?
Um, I, I can just speak for myself, since we haven't talked about this as a committee. I'm perfectly happy with the notion of the MFC being a, a policy-setting, um, organization rather than, um, overseeing day-to-day operations of things. I, I think looking at the, at the long-term picture of the town's facilities and planning, um, what should be done to keep them all in, in good working order is, uh, is a perfectly reasonable function for the MFC.
But you said two things, I want to make sure. You said two things in one sentence. So planning as in forward planning of new stuff and then planning as in making sure everything's in good working order as in maintenance.
Well.
Are you saying both those missions?
I'm, I'm saying in good working order for the future, not at the moment.
Right, but good working order, I, I'm not trying to wordsmith what you said. I just want to make sure that we are clear on what you said. Good working order to me means planning the maintenance, whether somebody else.
That isn't what I meant.
Okay, so please.
I, I, I think that the, the day-to-day maintenance of town buildings is rightly handled by a maintenance department.
Right.
That has a staff and its own budget.
Okay.
The function of the facilities committee, I believe, should be looking at the overall picture and long-term plan to make sure those buildings are functional in the future.
Okay, but yeah, we, once more, and then I'll stop. That's, okay, that's a higher level of the same thing, but what about new buildings or new things? Like a new building, is that separate? That's not part of the.
I, I, I don't, I, I think the MFC would have a role in.
Right.
Designing and, and overseeing.
That would be a separate, like the, so you're saying like a new HVAC that is in the bucket?
Yes.
But a new fire station is not in the bucket.
Okay, that's my understanding.
Okay, you know, I just want to be clear.
Actually, that's, they do, that is addressed in the old thing, and I, I don't think that that necessarily has to be changed.
Okay.
Sorry.
I, I agree with what Jerry said, and I'm, I'm supportive of that too. Couple of things you got to realize though, as we raise the MFC to being oversight only, there are a lot of individuals that are putting a lot of time in to keep things going and keep things functioning, which are, you know, people are going to move on and you're not going to have that ability soon. And that's going to cost time. Right now, you know, you're, you have your school resources and you have one person in the, in the town resource. And things like, example of what we just did, when we revamped the police station HVAC system, it was volunteer, the volunteer was there all the time handling that. It wasn't a town employee. And so there, there is going to be a gap. And you're going to see that, I, I believe, in my opinion, you're going to see a, a stress being put on the maintenance group that we're moving towards. And eventually you're going to need more people or resources so that it can fill that gap. Cause I can see that happen.
So Bill, is that, um, is it necessarily mutually exclusive? That if we have a maintenance, um, department that we can't still engage with volunteers? Or is there a way that it could be structured where we can have our cake and eat it too?
I, I think it depends on the personnel and, and the, the culture that we set in, in that new organization and the new thing that we're moving towards. If the culture is set to take advantage of anybody who in the town who wants to help out, then it's great. If, if the culture isn't that way and they want to basically do stuff on their own or hire out, then it's going to be costly to the town. So there's, you know, an even thing, and that has to be looked at really seriously. And the people that we hire and the people that we put in positions should be looking at things like, you know, and, and my own comment was is, you know, you try to fix something first and then call in the contractor because that's what Carla has always been. And mostly the fixing first has always been, at least on the town side, it's been volunteers. And, uh, and so that's the culture that I think would, would help out and keep, um, the burden of the taxpayer as low as possible. Because, you know, in the next four or five years, if we believe what the mosquito said, it's going to be a big burden on the taxpayer with, with what we're trying to do and fix some of these buildings and space and et cetera.
I think it should be a goal of ours. I mean, it is already a goal of ours with the fire department, right?
Yes.
And, you know, it, it is what makes it affordable. And as long as we have people who are willing to engage, we should have a staff that are willing to engage, um, as well. I think clearly there's a risk that somebody will try to engage as a volunteer that's more disruptive than they're helpful. But I think that's, that's what we're running for.
Yep, because we've had volunteers better.
Yeah, so, so I, I'm just wondering, is there kind of like, is there a two-part charter? And, um, I don't want to throw this on the MFC if they don't want to. But, uh, you know, I, I agree that kind of the policy-setting part is good. But we need to identify the staffing structure, um, and how to deal with this volunteer thing. And I don't know, is that something we asked Ryan to do? Is that something we asked Ryan to work with MFC to do? I don't think we create a different committee because that, that would be silly. I think, I think those are one of, those are our two options.
But I, I'm, I think the MFC would certainly be willing to help with that. But I think the town maintenance department needs to function as a real department.
Yeah, yes.
And, and it should be able to deal with day-to-day maintenance either. Maybe there are policies that say, try to do it in-house first and then, and then get an outside contractor. But I, I think that's the purview of the maintenance department.
Yeah, I just worry about changing the structure of the MFC without, without having that all worked out, then what, what, what would happen then, right? If we, if we don't have the maintenance department all worked out and funded and working well, but we say MFC, you're just policy. What have we just done?
Yeah, well, I think it behooves us to fund that maintenance department properly because for too many years we haven't.
I agree, but we don't, we don't know what it means yet.
Well, but we, we, we've identified kind of the endpoint and we, we know where we are now. And setting up an orderly transition between, between now and then is, is something definitely worth thinking about.
That's all written down and everything, what, what, what we think it should look like?
Yeah, I'm right. Ryan has come up with some.
Yeah, I presented it last meeting.
And, and I think, uh, I think part of that too is, is that, um, this maintenance group or whatever you want to call it, you know, the, the management style or the manager persons, whoever it's going to be, there's going to be Jim or Ryan or so, are the ones that really should be having the most input in the structure of that because they're the ones that are going to be managing it. having the most input in the structure of that, because they're the ones that are gonna be managing it and having to, you know, make sure day-to-day activities are taken care of. And Ryan has come up with already, you know, it's a nice straw man, I guess, of, uh, what he envisioned it would be. And I guess I assume we're gonna be talking about that when we get together with Jim in the next few days or so, so.
Okay, so you, you presented kind of like the draft thing, but we, we don't know yet, like, the, the real integration yet.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, this is gonna sound repetitive and like me, but the, the staffing part is, is understood. It's the control of the staffing that, that really needs to be decided. So it's confusing for staff when we have to go to three different entities to get an approval to do what, what is considered staff work. So if there are volunteers that are, that are doing work that staff should be doing, and we should be either hiring the right people or holding staff accountable to do that work, that, that's one thing. If, um, you hire the right people, they should be bringing in volunteers, much like I do with all of you, to help make decisions that, that help run the town. It would, it would be more efficient. But we can't get to that point until the appointing authorities decide that this is, this is how it's gonna operate. So that's the MFC, the school committee and the select board. So if each one has a different view of what's gonna happen, then we as staff can't really tell you if it's gonna work or not.
Right, but to the various points raised, I mean, that's where Jim's, I mean, we gotta be able to get to that in this set of meetings. Then you have, so that's the first part. And then we actually have base, uh, ba- back to, I think where Nathan will go with this is we gotta class it out, and we have a budget cycle. And then the actual money won't flow until July 1, 2024. But we can develop, in that process, we can develop a charter of where we want to be, right? Like what you were saying. And then just understand, we're a small enough town that until we've actually funded it and hired people and whatever, you guys still, the nighttime government still has to play a certain role, right? And I guess what I would be asking throughout that entire process though was, how much of that staffing could have been offset by volunteer time, rather than just by hiring a staff person? You mean, could it be in the future or has been in the? As we're developing the plan. Well, it's already being staffed by, you're putting in tons of time, right?
Yeah. Yeah, well, yes, but we've also, um, also hired one, the first person that we hired also managed to save us a lot of money, because we weren't calling contractors all the time, because we had somebody on staff who could take some. Of course, he had to be trained a little bit by a volunteer, but, uh, but the thing is that between him and the volunteer, they saved a lot of the money.
Yeah, and the, the funding for this i- isn't new. The funding's already there, it's just everywhere.
Well, that's good.
Yeah, it's not used.
So I don't see there's a, a large funding impact, cuz the.
That's good to hear, yeah.
So when, when we have a maintenance project at the library, so we have to get the library director involved, myself, the MFC, and some of the maintenance staff in order to make the decision, cuz the funding and the structure is everywhere. So the library approves anything in the building. The MFC has been given some, some control and charter over that, and the appropriation could come from, from any different bucket. That, that should be, if you really wanna see if it's gonna work, that needs to be streamlined. So the, the library has worked with the MFC to give up building control, which is really not Martha's job description, in order to, to make that work, and it has worked, but it's been essentially on goodwill. So what you're talking about now is this, on the school side, they're gonna cede some authority here, which, um, you know, it really comes down to the M, MUA right now that's on top of the, on top of the wastewater treatment plant. There's, there's three different opinions on that right now, and we, we can't get through to make that decision and get it done, because three different entities are weighing in. So the town really needs to decide who's gonna make that decision. So if it is a volunteer, it should be a vote of the whole volunteer board, or the vote of the appointing authority in order to make that call. So it's not, I, I don't think the problem here is with the day-to-day maintenance, as long as, as we're allowed to staff it. It's, it's really that medium and large capital projects that's being.
Is there any precedent to your knowledge for a joint appointing authority? In other words, if I'm sitting in the school comm seat, I real, I trust the MFC if it's configured with appropriate representation, but I don't wanna maybe defer appointing authority to the select board. Like, I want, since I'm half the buildings, I should have half the vote. Is there any precedent? Have a dual appointing authority? Isn't that like a regional school committee? Wow. Maybe, yeah, but do you have to form a regional?
No, no.
Yeah, no, you're right, you're right. That's a good, that's a good point. I mean, it may be a point to ask council, cuz maybe that would allay some of these, like, cuz you're right, the control. I think in theory, the schools would be also happy to say, let's make the board a board. Let's just make sure we have some, you know, control of it, and we have a rep. But anyway, it's a thought.
I just wanted to make one more comment. Um, I am very new here, as you all know. I've only been sitting on this for two years. And, um, I know Carlisle had, one of my concerns for the future is Carlisle has been a very volunteer-based town. And as being someone who's been in charge of volunteer things at the school, it's harder and harder to get volunteers, as we all know, we're at the same, see the same people at the same meetings. So it does concern me that we've, we've had a lot of deferred maintenance in this town, between the schools, between these buildings. And so I feel like of our, whatever we're gonna call it, the maintenance department, it needs to be funded and it needs to be staffed. And I know we've been looking up, we've rested on, not rested on, but we've used volunteers a lot, but like, not, no, you know, Bill does so much. Bill's, you know, gonna wanna retire someday, or just move, or, you know, I'm just saying that, that, yeah. The people that we have now on the MFC who are really knowledgeable and have been doing a lot of work, aren't going to be around in 20 years to be doing that work. So we have to have some sort of, we, and I don't know, I just, it would be lovely if we could continue to rely on volunteers, but if we can't, we also don't wanna be stuck. So I just wanted to put that out there.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I agree with you completely. I think that simultaneously, we need to ensure that we remain scrappy, right? We, we need to make sure that we try to figure out if we can fix it ourselves. We can't afford to outsource everything that we wanna fix, um, not with government pricing, you know, that discount we get.
Yeah, we don't have to pay sales tax. Whoop-de-doo.
But we do have to pay prevailing wage.
Yeah, that, that's what I'm saying, guys. Yeah.
So where do we go from here, Kate?
So we, somebody needs to draft a, a new charter. And I think.
I, I strongly suggest that you have the meetings first, then draft the charter.
All right, so will we have, so this may just not be ripe for review in, in certain respects. So we'll have the meetings with the school committee, the MFC and us as a group, and, uh, see what we can hammer out and where we get, and then we'll, we'll be talking about the charter. And when we do, uh, we have had some input from the ESC, uh, advocating for, um, making, for sustainability in our, um, decisions around.
It's always been that way with the MFC.
Yeah, it has been, hasn't it? God knows. But it, but I guess they wanted to make it explicit.
Should we move on?
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much.
I think I have to officially adjourn the MFC meeting.
That's right, right.
Thank you all.
Okay.
And thank you for all you do.
We made up a five minutes, uh, open at annual town meeting warrant. Until, and, uh, to be closed on February 13th, 2024.
So this is just opening the, the period, okay. So there's not a whole lot of discussion. I move this select board vote to open the warrant for the annual town meeting currently scheduled for April 29th, 2024, and to close the warrant on February 13th, 2024.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion?
Just a quick question. Um, we may change the, the date of town meeting, right? But that wouldn't affect, we're not thinking then we would, um, move the date of closing. Let's say we bumped the April town meeting to the first Monday in May. Would we then extend the closing of the warrant by week?
You can always do that later, but you don't have to.
Yeah. And, uh, it, how does this compare to what we did, um, this last, uh, fiscal year for closing the warrant? Do you remember?
Same timeframe. It gives you about a month to deliberate or two meetings.
Before the actual town meeting.
Which is what.
And still get it printed.
Yeah.
Get it printed, which Wayne was talking about tonight, which is that deliberative process that can't really happen till you have everything gathered, which is, just to quickly get it in here, the second motion comes from a recommendation from Peggy, so it's not,
Yeah.
it's not necessary to have a, a deadline for a citizen's petition, but if you do, then it makes it clear to the public when they need to get that done by, so that, you aren't deliberating on something real quickly or making a mistake that, um, could have been an administrative problem at town meeting.
And there is, there will be a ta- a select board meeting between the 30th and the 13th.
Yes, okay.
It occurred to me while we were having a discussion, um, with Wayne, and he was talking about how early Concord closes their warrant, that were we to close our warrants earlier, would give us more time for public outreach and education and hearings on the warrants possibly. I'm just throwing that out there, thinking about.
It's a pretty long time.
Well, sometimes you need it.
And, uh, I think, I'm hoping the, um, town meeting study group will, as part of the, you know, sort of warrant process and hearings, is look at the question of hearings, because I mean, we've been holding hearings, uh, in the past.
Right.
And the attendance is zero to one, you know, maybe. And, uh, if you close the warrant sooner and you have the, then the hearing sooner, are you likely to get any more people or, you know, I mean, I feel like it works the other way, right? The closer it is to town meeting, the more people start to pay attention. Anyway, I'm not saying.
I don't know. I, I think there's a, I'm, I'm with you. I think that I'm hoping the study committee can actually come at it some new way. The old way's not working, and I don't see making it early. I agree with you. I, making it earlier doesn't, doesn't help us. It hurts us, cuz we're, we are actually, we actually have a process, and we more or less follow that process, and it involves deliberating in meetings that only occur every, every other week. So we kinda need that time, in my opinion. But we gotta work on the communication side, but not necessarily because of the calendar.
Okay, we have a, a motion on the table in a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please vote aye.
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 Any opposed? Yeah, that was unanimous.
Hey, I moved the select board vote to set a deadline of January 30th, 2024 for submission of citizens petitions to the town clerk.
Again, all right, any discussion of that motion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That was unanimous as well. Great. Now I've made up. TA review lessons learned. Barney, you wanna kick us off here? Cuz you had some thoughts originally.
Yeah, it, it, um, kind of also spills over into the, um, uh, the discussion about the evaluation of the police and fire, um, heads, because some of what may have been learned in the process with, uh, doing the evaluation, the town administrator might be applicable to those upcoming evaluations. And I think Nathan was about to say this, but Ryan, you provided to us, is it in the packet or did you send it to us separately, your thoughts on, um?
I did some notes, yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah, I, you know, my, my reason for, um, encouraging us to have this conversation is that, um, we've just gone through a process that we hadn't done before. We have a new, uh, tool for doing that, and, uh, I think we wanna look at it, and if there are things we wanna change before we get, A, the whole staff doing it here at town hall, or, and/or the police chief and fire chief, let's, let's see if we can agree on what that might, we might want that to be and, and implement it. And then the second thing is just, uh, you know, my own experience going through evaluations, being on both sides, is that, um, it's the, it, it's sort of the, wh- what did you learn from it that is really valuable and then affecting wh- what you might be trying to do in the future? So that I just wanted to make sure we had that opportunity.
Yeah, so I, I mean, so I completely agree, um, with Ryan's comment in the notes about this, there's too many categories and, and they're, they're too similar, some of them are so similar to other ones. Um, I think I even put in my review, like.
Yeah, you did.
Already answered this one. Um, uh, and so I think just being much, you know, being more concise, um, I think um, would be very helpful. Um, but I think not, you know, not starting all over again. I think, you know, you only learn if you change few things as you go along and you tweak, tweak it. If you redo it, then you're not really learning anything. Um, the one thing that I'm not sure about, um, is whether or not coming out of that session, did we come up with very clear goals for Ryan for this year? And did we go through those with him? I'm, I'm just, I'm not, I, I, I remember the, doing the review part, but there's the next part, which is the assessment for next year, and making sure that those goals are very, very clear. So that might be something we can learn from there as well.
Yeah, cuz I don't, I, I know that you laid out some goals, but I don't think.
I don't think we ever discussed them.
I don't know if anybody individually did in talking with Ryan, but we certainly didn't do it as a group, you know, after, once the, um, valuation was done.
I think we should do that, and I do agree we should start the process earlier, because it was rushed, which is not doing a service to Ryan, right? Yeah, so we, we did our goals, right, a way back?
Yeah.
So his should flow from ours. I mean, but didn't you develop some?
I did.
We did. We just have never talked about them.
So we missed, we should. We don't know if we agree with them. Oh, we should review them, yeah.
And, and we also say pretty clearly in this, um, form, I've forgotten where it is, but it, it says the three things you need to look at when you're setting your goals, you know, the master plan, the whatever, whatever, the other two. Yeah.
That comes from me, actually. So one related to the master plan, one is a department goal, and the other is a self-development goal.
That's right, that's right.
So that's what you picked, three goals?
Uh, that's what I asked all staff members to do. I think it's, I, I don't like when people develop fifty goals, I like them to be.
How many did you develop for us to consider?
About ten.
Okay, so you're gonna, we're only down to.
Ten each.
Some special people got more than ten. Um, it, it, so, but just to go back to Nathan's point about, you know, small changes, uh, how would we, what do you think? How do you wanna, um, adjust th- this form? Do you wanna take a crack at that, Ryan, based on your experience and your suggestions, or, and, or what are you thinking, Kate, about this?
You know, there, there was a, one other problem was the overall performance average. There was a typo in it, so it was missing a whole category, which threw me off. Going to, trying to do the average at the end. So, uh, that needs to be fixed as well. Um.
The one that we have in our packet here that has some red line in it, this is under the police and fire, so the, that just proposes some changes of headings. And Ryan, is this coming from you?
Yes.
It's proposed, okay.
It ended up being my, my evaluation template.
Yeah.
This was supposed to be the department, I think originally, uh, when we worked on it, um, this was originally supposed to be the department head review, cuz there was, there's slight changes between department heads, cuz obviously, you know, the, uh, they will have for, for, for instance, um, financial management, which a secretary wouldn't have. So, you know, um.
I'll be sexist.
Whether it were male or female, if, they would not have, uh, you know, my, on the other hand, you might need the secretary or assistant, or whatever you wanna call, title you wanna give it, might need to be mature and have some good judgment. So that one needs, this was sort of the base, and then we were trying to, um.
Right, so the, right, so the question, I mean, the thematic question to me is, do you wanna be egalitarian and say, no, same form, everybody, from the janitor to the TA? Or do we recognize, as we kind of are with Ryan, and it's also apropos the two chiefs, some things count more than others at that role, like leadership, that you're numerical one, whether you missed a category, didn't, gives everything equal weight. That's kinda irrelevant to me. I think leadership, judgment, right, there were certain things that like are really important at those very tippy-top positions that, and I'm, agree with, um, Nathan, you know, y- sometimes when you have too many things, like with goals, you, you don't elevate or, you know, highlight the important things. And so maybe we. And so maybe we should use the template and we can do this both for Ryan in the future and for the two chiefs. Pick, you know, select from those to make the ones that we really want to emphasize.
I, I would think that we could have a core group of these, not hopefully all of these categories, but a core group of these categories that go across everybody.
Yeah.
And then, and then maybe towards the bottom, you have a leadership category. And if you're managing a person or a team or something, that's where, that's where that comes into play. Cause it doesn't matter if you're managing, you know, one person or the entire office, you're either a good leader or you're not a good leader.
Right. Is this for the select board or is this what you're proposing to do? I, I realize that this is for the, the police chief and fire chief that we're talking about, but you know, with the other ones even further down the chain, are we proposing that you do? I thought that was just staff and how you want to run or how each department wants to run. They can do what they want. Is that not the case?
It, it is, but they're going to model after what you did for me and the chiefs.
Cause we had, we've, we've been talking about this for probably what, a couple of years now, trying to get a system in place in a, you know, in town hall with regular evaluations, goal setting. And, and so we're finally at the point where that's going to start happening at the beginning of the year for the rest of the staff. And we want some kind of a tool that, that provides that overall framework.
And you were just reminding me something. I mean, I think the, the long, the two-year process, or maybe it's been longer, I think, is the, in institutionalizing goal setting, which requires planning, and then evaluation of those goals, did you do what we agreed you should do? I think the upper half of this form, all these job skill things really should be woven into how they execute their goals. We could put them as guide, maybe not all the categories, but going back again to what Nathan's saying, maybe we could take some of these pieces and just say, consider the employees' communication skills, attention to detail, timeliness, blah, 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 whatever those things are in your comments, right? Of the goals. And then maybe only have, you know, a very few other categories to the point made earlier, you know, leadership, some things that supersede or maybe are overarching over those whole things. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does make sense. I think getting back to my, let's not change too many things. We could just change the order and then maybe combine a couple. Like if we went with a proposed staff management, maybe leadership could come under that, you know, be, be somehow incorporated into that. And then maybe, I don't know, we, I, I'm not, I'm. I think, I'm not really sure about having the category dependability at all. I think that's kind of a core.
A lot of these are artifacts from the form that we started with, which was the original form that was used for, you know, everybody that had been in disuse for 15 years or so. So I personally have no attachment to any of these categories and would love to see, you know, well, it's also, by the way, it's the, also the, the original form that was continuously used at the library.
Right.
So the library was using this form and we tried to adapt it to, back to town hall. Town hall had a similar one, which was a little different. And we were trying to unify things across, but you know, and this was with nobody on board at the time that knew anything about H R. We did work a bit with Mark Way, but so this could certainly use some help.
Well, how about this to move us ahead? What if, Ryan, if you're comfortable with this, you, you take the conversation we've had tonight and rework this to try to a, lessen the number of categories and maybe do some combining or shifting the order and think about some that might be more appropriate for those in a leadership role or a management role and then those that are not. And then come back with a proposed form and see if we can't move ahead on it so that it can be in use for the two fire, the two chiefs and then for the rest of the staff.
I, I have a question about how that form is going to be used for the fire chief and the police chief. I don't care how it's used. I mean, to me, it's Ryan's bailiwick for the rest of the staff. The only thing I think we need to be looking at or wondering about are the other, the two chiefs. And were we proposing to do a similar process with the two chiefs that we did with Ryan, where each one of us meets with them and we do this a form? Is that what we're proposing? Cause I, it makes a big difference.
Two options in here, if I recall, right? Two different proposals.
Before we move on to that though, I just wanted to get back to, I just read my comments on Ryan's review. It was the ability to learn new skills. I just thought that was unnecessary and we could lose that as entirely as a category.
There's several like that, right? But yeah, let's finish out the first part before we jump to the chiefs. So, well, I just, let me ask you, are your, are your staff using some version of this form now?
Yes.
Okay, and that's for revaluing 23 and have you completed 23 reviews?
No, we're going to start them in January.
Okay, and it's by calendar, not fiscal?
Correct.
Okay, so, and they didn't, like you, they, we didn't have a formal set of goal setting or they had had a formal goal setting?
They had goal setting with me.
Okay, in the middle of the year or early? Okay, so it's like a half year goal. All right, so you've got a process started. So you've got plenty of data for your staff about what works and doesn't, you'll figure that out.
Correct.
So we're really back to, I think, the point you're making, raising the leadership template is what we care about.
That's all I care about, is the leadership.
Well, right, but, but the committee, I guess, again, the question we asked, should in the spirit of what's good for the chief is good for the janitor, how closely do we want the forms to line up or don't we care at all?
I, I don't think, I think we want to turn that responsibility over to the town administrator.
That's right, that's what I'm trying.
This is more of a philosophical.
The chief.
No, no, I'm talking about the chiefs. I'm not talking about the rank, talking about the two chiefs and Ryan. The question is not, the question is an optics one. Do we want rank and file employees to see that their leaders are being treated the same way with the same form or not? It's just a question. The answer is no, then fine, I just.
Opinion would be that we can have different forms.
Okay, that's fine.
You may evaluate people differently.
I don't disagree, I just want to make sure because that was one of the principles we were going with.
Yeah. Yeah, I think, as I said, I think there's, for instance, well, I suppose even a janitor, if they should show some, let's say, resourcefulness, because if they come in and they, you know, they find something that they're, the more resourceful one will be much more, you know. But it might be also more important for them to be punctual and come every, you know, regularly, be dependable than for a town administrator to be.
Well, I mean, don't listen to that, Ryan, I don't agree with her.
Oh, stop digging. Okay, but are we, so are we then saying, we all seem to agree that Ryan should do whatever he wants with this form or any other form for his process, which he's got a process? Are we now asking him to design what he would like to see or what he recommends in his form with the understanding that that will map over to the other two leadership positions?
I, I thought, you know, kind of we started, at least I started saying, let's make a few changes as we can. Ryan's comment was, there's too many categories. I think if we can just condense some of the categories, Ryan, do you see any reason why the other two chiefs couldn't be evaluated under the same form that you were evaluated under?
Yes, that's fine. I would consolidate, but yes.
So you don't see any reason why they couldn't be? Okay, so I think we just consolidate a few of those things and.
Recommend a change to the form and that'll be the form we.
Yeah.
Right, okay.
Right, and it's now somewhat untethered from this form. I mean, I agree, that's what I mean.
But again, oh, go ahead.
I, I would suggest though, that if these are the senior most evaluations, so we should be setting what are those metrics that we want to evaluate? So I don't think in this sense that we turn that over to Ryan.
Then we should, okay, so that's what I was trying to clarify, cause Barney recommended that Ryan take the form and suggest some changes. And then we would again, look at those changes and now with an eye to three chiefs, not one chief. But, and we all agree that however he's using the form and he is using it for his staff, let him figure that out on his own. So back to the question, do you think we should take the lead and change this form? Or should we do what Barney suggests? Ask Ryan to make some recommendations and then let's look at the recommendations.
Well, I guess that's, go back to the briefing that Ryan provided in the packet. If you, which is under the public safety department head evaluations. I don't, there's no page number on what I'm looking at. But it, the very first paragraph, you know, he writes about the purpose, but then the four questions, what goals are guiding your evaluation process? And then the, the other three sort of follow from that.
Now that gets to Kate's question, but that's, again, there's a form, some form, some way of gathering data. Then there's process of how we do all that. So I'm still on form before we get to data.
Here's my thought on it. I think we, as a select board, provide some goals. I don't think it makes sense for us to go through the form and decide each little aspect of the form that we want to use for the chief, for the top three evaluations. And then once we have said, these are our basic goals, we have Ryan, if the form needs changing, then it gets changed.
We can do it in parallel. He can develop, knowing that there's going to be three goals, he can consolidate categories like what Nathan's saying.
Yeah, his question is what goals are guiding your evaluation process? Not the setting of your three goals for the next year. I mean, I'm just reflecting on Ryan's, you know, way of thinking about this, which I thought was helpful.
So I volunteer to sit down with Ryan and adjust this a little bit. And then, okay, the form, yeah.
Good.
Great.
Done.
I, I do think it's worth, yeah, I think that's great. I think it's also would be helpful for us now, if, I know about time, but how, how much of the process are we going to make public and who's going to complete it? Because that whole discussion, which is sort of laid out again in the second half of this memo is, you know, the more public process and then a semi-public process.
Did that work well with what we did with Ryan? I felt it did, did you?
It did. It's also very common for superintendents and town administrators to have that process. It's, it's part of our job. It, it would be uncommon for the evaluation of a police chief or fire chief to be public.
In the way that yours was.
Would be one of the few towns. So if you do want to do individual reviews, which I've talked with each chief and they're comfortable with, and if, if that's the choice, that's the choice. It would be a public document.
It's a public document if we in series meet with them.
Yes.
So us doing a summary report for you would be uncommon for a police chief or a fire chief.
Correct.
Okay, so we can talk about that when, when, when we meet about it, I guess. How, how do we ensure that, you know, because one of the things that came up throughout this process was how do we ensure that if people have comments, they want to be considered? They can be, they can submit them in some way.
Can I ask an exculpatory question on that? So when we did yours, each of us sat down with you and the transcript, if you will, of that sit down is not public. That's us meeting one-on-one with him, right?
And just went privately to Kate.
Right, then privately, that whatever form we did goes to Kate. So that is also not a public document? It's only the aggregation that makes it public.
Then became public.
Okay.
It's what we spoke about in public meetings.
Yeah, right. So I think, why can't we do the same? In other words, the, I certainly would welcome the chance to have a one-on-one with both chiefs. Cause I don't, I mean, I could do it, I suppose, but I don't typically do it and it's a nice time to do that. So that's valuable anyway, right? A check in and an open discussion that's not public. And we can decide what we want to actually document. And then I guess the question back is, what, what subset of that do we want to? Some piece of that work product should, in my opinion, be made public if in fact we're having serial meetings by the deliberative board. But we could be very narrow in what we actually want to summarize out of those meetings, right?
I think Ryan's saying that it's very unusual to do that.
Yeah, so the, it wouldn't be unusual for each of you to meet with the chief and offer feedback one-on-one.
Yep.
It's the deliberation and what becomes public because of that deliberation that, that would be pretty unique.
So how do you eval him? If you have five separate meetings where we presumably talk about how, how the performance has been, what the goals are, how do you, how does, how does, what's the purpose, right? That's what you're saying. I mean, the purpose is to evaluate them. How do you evaluate them if you don't aggregate the comments?
I think, well, I'm, okay, yeah. Cause you know, one of the things I felt that like when we've had contract negotiations with the chiefs, I wasn't prepared or sufficiently, you know, had enough sufficient background to, to know sometimes what to, to say. Because there hadn't been any evaluations that we could rely on in those discussions. So I think that the purpose of the evaluations is so that we know these guys better, so that when we do do the, those, those.
The contract negotiation with them for their future contracts.
So I can't, I can't, I can't emphasize enough that it's not, it don't matter the choice. But is it reading the evaluation that you want to do or doing the evaluation? They're two different things. So is it understanding the evaluation or actually executing it?
I have a thought on.
What I worry about, and it's not directly answering your question, but what I've been thinking about here and in doing your evaluation, and you know, maybe, maybe this is just something I'm not doing, but I don't feel qualified to sit down and evaluate the police chief or the fire chief. I don't understand what they're doing as much on a day-to-day basis as I do Ryan.
Okay.
And so, yeah, go ahead.
Maybe I could answer a little bit. And I, I guess when we worked on the contract negotiations with the chief, I'll just say a chief, we, Ryan was involved in that and I was involved in that. And we identified, you know, within that structure that there were things that the chief needed to work on going forward. And I think we have to have some kind of process in place because you, you want to make sure your employees, you know, can grow and, you know, meet goals. So, you know, I don't know what, how we do it, but I'm, I'm really more thinking we, we do need to have.
And you're picking up on the second part I was going to say, which is in, if we are the evaluators, then the evaluation isn't the only time we should have a touch point where we're really, you know, it, it, we can't, the evaluation can't be.
Yeah, it can't be once a year.
So I would, I would like to answer personally from me, Ryan's question. I would be happy to be able to read the evaluation. I don't need to do the evaluation, I don't think. But I would like to have access to the evaluation, see that it's been done and to know, you know, how our employee is doing.
You, you mean for the, the two chiefs?
Yes.
Yeah.
But that's even a more remote touch point. That's not an annual, that's an every three years touch point.
No, no, every year we would.
This evaluation.
Read privately the evaluation.
But what?
The chief.
The yearly evaluation.
Who evaluates then?
Contract, isn't the select board supposed to do the evaluation? We'd have to change the contract, right?
There's a disc.
Surprise, who doesn't?
It says they have to be evaluated, I don't.
They should, well, they should, they, people, senior people should be evaluated, right? Do we agree on that? Okay, and as Nathan's saying, the select board has that responsibility already. And I kind of agree with you. I think we should, we should embrace it. And I agree with Nathan, it shouldn't be once a year. If we're going to embrace it, let's do it right. I'm, I'm struggling though with how to do that. If we, I mean, we may not all agree on that, so I don't want to say we do. But if we agree on that, then I don't see a path that doesn't make a document public and a deliberative process to summarize. I can't see how that's.
A liaison that can do it.
That's what I was thinking too, liaison, you know, and maybe, but you have to entrust a, one representative of the select board who is the liaison, who, you know, and with the chiefs, I actually do meet with them.
Okay, so, but I'm, then I'm back to my procedure. If each of us, instead of sending to Kate, sends it to you, our comments, doesn't your accumulation of that become? If each of us, instead of sending to Kate, sends it to you, our comments, doesn't your accumulation of that become a public work product?
It would.
How do you not make that public?
Yeah.
You can't. That's what I'm saying. I'm fine to say it's you and not the board or whatever. It's still a public process and I think the public deserves to know how the rating body has rated that chief.
But I would say only in, in summary, not each.
No, no, clearly in summary, not, not the way you're saying where you just privately say, well, I got these five inputs and here's, you can't do that.
Right. And I, well, I haven't done that because we haven't, we haven't had this process.
That's the right answer.
Well, no, it's true, but it's also, but it, it is because if you have a liaison and they're meeting frequently or, you know, and then.
You know better. I'm agreeing that you know better.
You have a sense of, of what's working and what's not working. Well, how do we institutionalize that?
Well, so that's two different, sorry, two different paths, right? We do it as a body or we say, no, you're the liaison. That's your part of your job because you're meeting with the guy. And then it can be private, I think. We just won't know about it, which is weird.
Well, the other way to go, the other way to go is we, the process is that as it outlines here, that it's conducted by the town administrator. Falls under his, her responsibility. And that person is getting input from the liaison as well as whatever other sources of input they choose to gather. And then that evaluator, the town administrator is providing their summary evaluation and that gets sent out to us. And we can comment back directly to him privately now can, and that then can be remain private as I understand it. Is that correct? And then you, and then you would.
Check, but.
Yeah. And then you would, based on the input feedback you got from us, you might then.
But then there's.
That summary, and then that would then come to before the board for a presentation with the chief and done in a public meeting.
Close, close, I think. You would have to give me feedback. I would have to write it and there could be no adjustment.
Correct. Wait, you, you write it, you write it, send it to us, you get feed, but we, no, you can't write it first.
You have to give me input and then trust is the wrong word because I don't think it's the right one, but I have to do my job.
Reliance.
Eventually becomes public.
That is not a public document.
So what's public about what you do?
Nothing, nothing would be.
So that's, I mean.
Yeah, I think.
We're kind of hung on process. I believe whether other towns do it or not, you know, there are the, the four senior leaders, right? Town, the superintendent. And the two chiefs. I mean, these are the critical functions and the critical leadership positions. We rely on those people. They're paid the best. We think they are the best. Two of the four already have a process that's basically institutionalized by the Commonwealth. The other two don't. There's lots of reasons probably, but I don't see anything wrong with. If we separate who does it, whether it's just the TA and the liaison or all of it. Coming out with a work product that says, okay, you know, Chief Amendola, his first year on the job, he's done these great things. He's got these other things, maybe he agrees he should improve on and making that, socializing that. I think it's a good thing because I think our two chiefs are great. And I don't, I don't see anything wrong with the townspeople seeing that. And by the way, the volunteer firefighters, who's a very important constituency and a union that's also pretty important. They're not constituents per se, but you know, stakeholders. So I actually would like to see more sunshine on it. I, I'm not sure the mechanics yet.
I, I don't disagree with you, David. I, I think it's just the level of.
We don't have to get to the form level, it sounds like.
But I'm, I'm not, I'm not completely convinced that it would just be the liaison. I did just look and Chief Amendola's contract has said it's the select board that will do the review. I think that Brian's is the same. I think Brian's, unless it changed, the first time around, it was quarterly.
And we should do it more.
Neverly.
Yeah. So I'm not, I'm not.
And in some ways, Brian's almost more important. No, he's not more important, but what I mean to say is he's a strong chief. So we don't really have much statutory oversight. So all we really can do is provide that input, observing what he does and feeding it back. And the other reason maybe is, you know, his stakeholders are also citizens, largely citizens of the town who do double duty. And we kind of maybe owe that as well.
So I think we're all in agreement that the form is pretty good. We just need to make some adjustments to it. What we need to figure out is how we collect the input and kind of who's collecting the input and things like that.
Are we in agreement that there should be more, as David put it, more sunshine on it? That we want to have a public element at the end in the way that the superintendent's evaluation then comes before the.
And the TA.
And is presented publicly.
The TA process and the school process are pretty close.
Yeah.
I'd be in agreement to looking into the feasibility of doing that in a way that would, you know, but I, I, I still think we need to figure out. Cause I, you know, I don't, I don't know that it's tremendously effective, effective, you know, for us to right now go in and do a review of Chief Amendola. Cause I don't know how much interaction we have on a constant basis unless you're the liaison.
Yeah. Yeah. I would feel very uncomfortable trying to fill out this form.
Cause we need to close that.
Absolutely nothing.
That gap or figure out a way, either personally, we need to close that gap and which would take more of this time. Or we need to figure out a way of leveraging other people, but still remaining involved.
Yeah.
In the, in the output of that based upon things that we.
We don't, by the way, in the first year, however, we end up in the first year of this process, we don't necessarily have to evaluate him. We could begin the process at the front end, which is participating goal setting. And have check-ins so that we do become, we'll never get as knowledgeable as Travis, but you know, we can attain some, some measure.
But you know, that's an interesting, David, that's an interesting point though, right? We have a chief that's only been on board since when? Since May?
Yeah.
June. So we could this year.
Yeah.
Say, you know, we're kind of in a transition.
Yeah.
And that we would, would like to have a process where we're, he's just giving his sense of the, the department. Right? And then, and what his goals are for next calendar year. And we give some feedback and then basically we're setting ourselves up and we figure out how we're going to do the. Us getting more, right, understanding of, of what his role is or that the liaison is going to play more of a role in next year's. Formal evaluate, you know, more of a full year's, full of value.
You can do the same for Brian. I mean, Brian's been very articulate.
Right. We should do.
Meetings with Brian, he's very specific about things he needs to, wants to accomplish. And we could build on that. And you know him pretty well from LEPC. I mean, we have more institutional knowledge, I think of what Brian's been up to.
Yeah. Right. But he would, right, we'd have to do his differently and more full evaluation. I don't know. What do you think of that, Ryan?
Just the, the consideration of what you write and then share with each other is what becomes public. So that doesn't have to be this form. It could be a paragraph from each of you, but it can't be changed or consolidated by one person. So hybrid models here might work where there's a formal evaluation done. And then each board member provides a paragraph of input that's public. If you wanted to do it that way.
Why is, why, why would we, why, why, why wouldn't we do it more like the way we did you?
The OML says that anything that you send to each other needs to be shared.
We didn't send each other, like with you, we sent it to one person. I didn't see Travis's. I didn't see Kate's. I sent mine to Kate. Kate told me I did it wrong. I fixed it.
No, you didn't, but that's okay.
I did it. I thought I did.
Are there, yeah, is there a problem with, instead of Kate playing that same role that you're playing it? Where's, where?
We don't see everybody. So you see everybody.
See it. And then you've developed the summary.
The right way to do it, including with my next year is anything that's written is published. So there's no.
No editing is what you're saying.
It's just a summary.
Okay.
Not a summary, a aggregation.
Of five paragraphs.
Or five, five-page reviews, whatever it is.
You're saying, I'm sorry, I want to make sure I understand this. You're saying the, the process we followed this year for you, we would, we really should do it differently next year and whatever those, those, those reports that we sent to Kate, those would all become public?
They were, she consolidated all the comments.
Right.
One, but it really should be word for word.
Huh. Really show me.
Boy, okay.
Yeah, right.
And now we're back to square one.
Well.
Thanks for that wrench.
Yeah.
I feel like a dog chasing his tail right now. I guess maybe we should.
Well, let's just table it for now. Can you confirm that? I'm trying to remember school committee. I'm pretty sure that we sent those evals to, like now would be Mary O'Regan or Mary Reagan, whatever her name is. And.
Secretary.
She and the chair came up with a single, a single thing.
But it wasn't verbatim, what you, the school committee.
They quoted you, of course it is, but the aggregate ratings are, well, part of it was very numeric.
Yeah.
So if you're really numeric, probably that's just math, right? So that's doesn't, you don't, but I didn't know like that Travis gave him a two.
Right.
I just know his average was a three, right? You know, and then, I mean, there's ways to do, but that again, it gets numeric, which we don't want, right? So I don't know.
I, I also just to repeat it, and I guess we should move on, but is that I don't feel, even, even if I were to do something differently next year in terms of how much I interacted with either the two chiefs, if I were not the liaison, I, I just don't think I would be enough involved or have enough experience with that person's performance to feel like I could rate them. I mean, yes, could I write a paragraph? It could be a very general one, but I wouldn't.
So what if the, if the liaison and are you liaison to both? What if the liaison and the TA together did like we were saying 20 minutes ago, like input, gather it, write it. But we have a session where we present it and discuss it with the chief. We don't, we had no input. We were just observing what other people said. It still goes to what the contract and what Nathan's saying, that we still have the oversight, deliberation, commenting, whatever. But, but we're not creating the primary input, I guess, as well.
I think what you lose there, if you don't have individual meetings, whether it's just Travis and Ryan or, you know, you lose there is the discussion.
Yeah, I know. I like the meetings if they would do.
The learnings and the, you know, anyway, I think we should move on.
Yeah.
I think we have to move on.
It's not the meetings, it's the, the product that gets shared that matters. So you can have as many meetings as you want.
We can meet now. There's nothing to say we shouldn't adopt a, a internal.
Let's, let's.
Process.
Let's bring them in, set some goals and then bring them in the next year and talk to them.
Or even, well, or Travis, even if we wanted the whole select board to have more interaction, sets the goals. And then that person comes in more than once a year, right? To, to review, give us an update.
Or quarterly review.
Yeah. Something where we had more.
A lot of quarterly.
We don't want, yeah, I mean, maybe, well, we figure out how much of that we want to have. It makes sense.
Let's move on.
Yeah. Okay. Town administrator report.
Right.
All right. Would you give me three minutes?
It's a short one.
Do you need three minutes? Cause I have a quick liaison report. No, 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 seriously. If you need three, I could do a quick liaison report.
No, I'm saying.
Okay.
Three total.
Whoa, whoa, three minutes to give it to. I thought he needed to find it. Gotcha.
The equipments, the equipments arrive for the conference rooms. We'll be installing that. The mic test will happen on Wednesday, so we're going to test new microphones here. In terms of the land use sustainability coordinator, we have started another round of interviews for that position and interviewed a few excellent candidates. So we're hoping. And we have offered and received acceptance for an assistant town clerk position that we can bring to you for the 12th, your meeting on the 12th. Then we are starting the process for a municipal assistant to replace Janine Blum, who's now the health assistant. And then a new DPW driver labor position. That is to replace two moves, one that's still, it's been vacant for a bit. In terms of the 25 budget, FY 25 budget update, I've consolidated many of the department heads. They still have two days to submit and they do spend some time on this. It's important that they, they spend some time on it. So the budget draft will include the sections that I've outlined in the report. I'm not going to read them, but it's a pretty similar format to what you've seen in the past. I will offer recommendations for each. So this year I'm not going to give you the option one, two or three. I'm going to give you my recommendation on what's come in and then expect you to adjust that based on your priorities and, and understandings. A really crucial decision point that you can't make tonight because it's not on the agenda, but the Concord Town meeting is set for April 29th. The cable committee has said they cannot support both meetings. That's not necessarily a meeting to move it, but it is a consideration. The week before is Passover and the week before that is April vacation. So there's two conflicts in moving it before that you should debate whether or not you move it later in the week. So it's not the first day of Passover is a consideration the, the board should have. And if you move it later, then I don't think there's much implication, except you're not first. Okay. Request for the use of the town common. So this came before you, before it's a very good cause, so I'm not trying to skip over it quickly. But the William B yourself challenge, they're requesting the use for December 20th. It was printed wrong in the motion. So we just need to remake that motion if you're willing, please.
I move to approve the request for use of the town common for the Williams be yourself challenge event, brighten the night on December 20th, 2023, 4pm to 8pm.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Unanimous.
All right. You guys are very familiar with this, the Carlisle Old Home Day Association. I enjoyed my first old home day and will enjoy my second, hopefully, if you keep me around. Will be June 22nd and June 23rd. So they'll be using all of the same spots for, for all of the same traditional things. And they've also requested to hang a banner, starting in, in June, near the turn for School Street in order to advertise.
Talk about planning ahead.
I know.
Is a motion for that?
All right. Do, I move to approve the request for the use of town property, including the town commons, balding fields, the usable portions of the school and grounds, the fire station, town hall and the byways that attach to these properties, as well as selected roads for the one and five mile foot road races and parade for Old Home Day, June 22 to 23, 2024. Do we need to have the banner hanging approval in this same motion? It's not in here right now.
You could add it if that.
Okay. And to approve the hanging of a banner.
Starting June 1st to the end.
Starting June 1st, 2024.
Until the end of June.
Until the end of June.
Second.
Great. Any, okay. All those in favor?
Hi.
Okay. I am notifying you of a rotary sign for Annie Junior.
Annie, okay.
December 8th to December 16th. This will immediately follow the previous rotary signs. So we will have two straight weeks of rotary signs. The fire department renovation designer selection committee interviewed four candidates today. From what I hear, it went very well. They transmitted their top three rankings to me. I am to now negotiate with the first ranked designer, who was Johnson Roberts, Johnson or Johnson Roberts, JRA, Johnson Roberts. So I will be working with them. If that doesn't go well, then you move to number two or number three per your policy. So this will likely result in something coming to you the 12th, the 19th, or the first meeting in January for your decision. That'll include a price proposal and a technical proposal. The holiday schedule and events, we held a Thanksgiving dessert potluck. We didn't consider how much food it would be. So it was both delicious and disgusting how much we ate. Thank you, David, for stopping by. He enjoyed it with us and probably can attest to how much sugar we ate that day. We had a two-hour release prior to the holiday to allow people to spend some time with their family. We're going to hold the annual staff holiday lunch. That's everyone in here for, for Chinese food on December 20th. And I'll be taking department heads and town hall staff to lunch on the 21st. So there will be a impact on the calendar that day. Some procurement updates, the DPW sprinkler system has been procured and accepted. We are moving forward with that project once we finalize contracting. The wastewater treatment plant MUA, we, we, we have a winning bid for this. However, the project will cost more than anticipated for this. The ARPA committee has asked to see additional options. We are researching those options from what we understand, those options will be at least double the cost. So I'm expecting this to come back to, to ARPA for consideration. The dog park is out for bid. We should be getting that in two weeks. Working with the recreation department to procure these construction services, we'll know about that on December 14th. And we are bringing some contractors out to the area on the 7th, we decided today. So that should be a very good project. Then Corey Auditorium Lighting, we've had a lot of success reworking the procurement for this. It reminds me of Green Hill Barn, the way we had to. Then Corey Auditorium Lighting, we've had a, a lot of success, uh, reworking the procurement for this. It reminds me of Greeno Barn, the way we had to attack this. Uh, we're closing that out on, uh, December 12th. So hoping to get good bids for that project as well. So just some updates on the, the lingering procurement. So you know, we're continuing to work on it. Two things that are upcoming, sent you a draft of the road maintenance plan. Um, I think it's pretty, pretty useful document and plan. It obviously needs your input. So niche is coming. I believe we have that scheduled for the 19th right now in order to make that presentation. And then, uh, thanks to Nathan, we have finished our Comcast negotiation. Uh, we will be holding that hearing. It's been advertised for the 19th, which is why we added that meeting so we can, uh, finally accept a new contract with Comcast. Some staff recognition, uh, Gretchen is, she's got that look of someone who's, who's been given too much stuff to do. So that's exactly what we wanted to do with her, uh, as in her new executive assistant role. Uh, she's killing it. We're flooding with work, but uh, she's really good at understanding nuances and coordination. So I think it was an excellent hire. And she's really taken on the challenge and been a bit of an innovator here in her first 30 days. So uh, just reporting back to you on, on her status and thanking her for her service so far. The Fire Department was dispatched to Russell Street for a structure fire earlier this month, uh, engines three, four, five, and ladders nine and C10 and ambulance C8 all responded to this structure fire. Our teams battled heavy fire damage in the garage, but contained the blaze and prevented a full house loss. There was considerable damage because of water, but thankfully no injuries to include a, a pet that was found that was able to escape. Uh, special thanks to our responding teams as they continually risk their lives to keep others safe. And then, um, a note of Thanksgiving for our staff. I'm thankful for the tremendous amount of experience we have in all our departments, our willingness of our new hires to learn about the community and integrate into existing practices. We have a good team here in the town of Carlisle and I'm looking forward and thankful for seeing what they can do.
Seeing which ones, see what's of the existing practices could be changed because they might know something better from a different.
Sure. And then I have the draft agenda. Review.
We put something on there.
Yeah. Where is that?
Tonight.
See. Oh, here it is. Okay.
So it starts with a pretty, pretty lengthy, uh, presentation of the budget, draft one of the budget.
That joint with FinCom?
And joint with FinCom, yep. It'll include, uh, hopefully some, some financial modeling that the FinCom requested.
So which day are you looking at right now? I see December 12th.
The 12th.
Yeah.
And then, uh, we are expecting TBA to bring the Police Department renovation concept design and costs to you on the 12th as well. So a pretty weighty meeting. Um, those are the only two major things scheduled that day for that reason.
I, I think we asked, uh, you, Nathan, to come back with, um, with your, the.
Town meeting.
Town meeting study committee.
Uh, yeah, we can do that as long as you guys all provide us with comments.
Okay.
Otherwise we won't have anything to else to incorporate.
Right. Okay.
And then the 19th, uh, which is an additional meeting that's been added the week after, would have the, uh, road maintenance plan in the Comcast hearing. And that will be hopefully it.
We're not doing the, um, the, um, paving plan. That's not going to happen until January.
No. The 19th.
The road main, the road. Oh, 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 I thought we were doing the 19th for the Comcast contract, but no, we're doing the. Sorry, I missed that. Missed that.
Comcast will be half hour and then about an hour for the road.
And then, um, what about the MAPC report on regionalization? Is that still delayed?
That'll be in January. They're almost done. They, they only have two departments left.
Okay. Great.
Sorry.
I, um, I just want to say on the 12th, I, I'm not sure I can make it for the whole meeting. I, I have a prior commitment that's been established for about six months and I didn't realize they're on the same night until recently because I thought that we were going to move to the 19th, you know, I thought, okay, that's fine. And then I realized we're doing the 12th and the 19th. So I will, I'm just trying to sort out how, how I can do that and still participate. I'll let you know.
Okay. So this is, uh, right.
That, all right.
Do I have to do anything with these?
It's just correspondence.
Okay.
Approve minutes?
Yeah. I move to approve the following select board meeting minutes as presented or amended, October 10th, 2023, November 14th, 2023.
Second.
All right. I just want to let you know I did, uh, send a couple of amendments in, but they were non substantive.
So she sent, the, the second one was one we'd already considered and amended.
Uh, yeah, where she put in the red line part of the.
Because we looked at it last time and we made some changes, right?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. That's what I thought.
Yeah. And that was the what? The November 14th version?
Right. Yeah.
Yeah.
Are we missing one then in between or did we already approve the one? October 20 something.
We have the one that, um, Aubrey was doing in the gap between Jen and Gretchen. I might be missing one.
That's yours, isn't it? No, we have the October 10th and November 14th. So we're missing.
14th. Oh, yeah.
We're missing one, but I don't know if it's one we already approved or not. I can't remember.
Anyway, should we go ahead and approve? Should we go ahead and?
I know we haven't approved either one of these two.
I know. Right. I agree. All right. So we have a motion on the table.
And a second.
And a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
I, and by the way, Gretchen, maybe she hears this on recording. She did a really good job. So I, we gave her some feedback. It was a little too granular and she did much better the second time around. So fast learning curve.
Yes.
I think we might be missing.
Okay. I'll look into it.
Okay.
All right. Um, liaison.
Just, I have one quick one, if that's okay. Um, so Heidi Herring, who's a member of the celebrations committee, uh, reached out to me because I guess, I think I'm the liaison to the committee. And, um, anyway, we know each other too. And they, um, a group of them got together and they're talking about the 20, in 2025 is the 250 year anniversary of Patriots Day. And Concord has been at it for a year and a half already with a very elaborate committee and subcommittees. Um, the, but Heidi, the, the exchange we had was basically they, they would like to come to the select board at some port fairly soon and just discuss ideas and get our input. And then they would figure out whether they want to manage something or they'd be proposing a subcommittee or a separate committee.
They, the celebrations committee?
Yeah. Yeah. So I just wanted to put that out there and say if, um, if we could do that in January, um, I think that would be helpful.
250th is in 2025?
Mm hmm.
Okay.
Yeah. So not next year, but the year after.
Okay.
But they're thinking, you know, we'll do some things in Carlisle and they might also.
Patriots Day or roughly.
Well, they, they're, you know, it's still very early. So I think they want input from us about what we think. And yeah, also their, um, question about funding, depending on what they want to do. So, right.
Hey, good job. I thought you were deep in trouble, but.
Community input.
10 o'clock.
You get community input and then we.
Oh, community input. You have nobody in the room? Anybody online? Okay. Seeing none.
I move that we adjourn. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.